Conference will now be recorded.
Orford City Council on Thursday, September 18th. And please, excuse me, I will start with a. Is that somebody who's? That's not Ben, is it?
I don't know.
You might take it. Okay. It might be. Excuse me. Hello?
What do we have?
Yes, hey there, Ben. Yeah, we're just starting the meeting now. Are you having trouble getting in or something?
There it is.
Oh, okay. Okay, I will ask.
We're going to pause the recording while we get our last person in here.
This conference will now be recorded.
So I'll say it again, Councilor Brennan.
Here.
Councilor Burns.
Here.
Councilor Pogwizd.
Yeah, I'm here.
Councilor Rask.
Here.
Councilor Webb.
Webb, President.
And Councilor Lovendal is excused tonight. And we also have with us City Administrator Melissa Radcliffe and our City Recorder Joseph Harrison. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. So we'll start with any additions or changes to the agenda. I don't have any. Do you have any? Okay. With that, we will move on to citizen concerns for agenda items. Do we have anybody in the room or online that would like to make a citizen comment?
Seeing any reaction online.
Okay, hearing none. We will move on to the consent calendar.
I would make a motion through the consent calendar.
Second thought.
Any discussion? Hearing no call for discussion, I'll call for the vote. Councilor Rask.
Yes.
Councilor Webb.
Webb, yes.
Councilor Pogwizd.
Yes.
Councilor Burns.
Yes.
Councilor Brennan.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do we have, has Mr. Cohn from KDP joined the meeting yet?
It does not appear so, but the link has been signed.
Okay. Maybe I will.
So just coming over, it looked pretty normal. And it looked like the same recommendations that we usually kind of get in government. You need four more people to watch over the recording.
Yep.
That's good.
Yep. Let's see if he, I'm just gonna text him here before we. I can.
Did everybody see this flag in the back on the audit?
Yeah, so that's what you're gonna.
This is going to the state court.
That's what we will look at once we hear this. Do we want to, while we're waiting for Ben to get in, perhaps just try to get through something farther down the agenda? Do you want to give your report? Oh, whoops. He hasn't received it.
He said he hasn't received anything yet.
Okay.
He said two minutes ago.
Do you want to?
I could take your phone and call him too.
Okay. I was gonna, do you want to just do that? We also went, I could send it to him, the link right here, because I have his email address if I can.
Like C on there. Let C give us plenty of time.
Yes, absolutely. That would be me too. I'm like, well, I'm gonna get my.
Actually, I cannot email from here, so we'll let you do it, Melissa. Thank you. Okay. Well, if we want to, why don't we just, while we're waiting, we can we can move down to the mayor's report, which is farther along here. Wait a second, I just got one from him. Okay. So I just put a bunch of things in the mayor's report. And what I'm gonna do, a lot of the things I'll just mention that I have been working about recently have been with John Public Works and the engineers and a lot of stuff related to our water, highest priority water projects. And so I will cover them more probably on that topic, the agenda. But you can review this. The big thing that I'm most excited about is that we did finally pay off the big loan. I know it's been sort of like, we're gonna pay it off, we're gonna pay it off. We got the grant and will we finally like wire the money? So that's a really great thing. Because that means that comes off our debt ledger just in time for us to take more.
Quarterly?
We didn't ever, ever have to pay anything yet because the payments on loans don't start until you finish the project. And so we had never paid anything. We got the, we were able to get the money. So anyway, yeah, it worked out really well. So. The stars align, yes.
More than.
Talk in your microphone, please, sir.
Well, on that, in that one regard, yes, that's a positive.
That one regard.
I was very pleased with that. That's why I'm highlighting that, because I am one who always tries to highlight the positives, even when. So anyway, and then you can just read other things. If anybody has any questions. We are there? We have Ben? Oh, great, okay. So if anybody has any questions about the mayor's report, we can do that. And we now have Ben Cohn from KDP joining us here.
Yes, thank you for your patience. Sorry about that.
Well, sorry that we, there was a hiccup of not getting the right link or whatever. So we're glad to have you here. So councilors, some of you remember having Ben here at meetings in the past. And I'm going to turn things over to you at this point. Ben?
Perfect. Well, thank you for the introduction and good to see everyone again, albeit on a small screen. So of course, I'm here to present the results of the fiscal year 24 audit. So the year ending June 30th, 2024. And I'm gonna go through two documents, which hopefully you all received in advance. I'm gonna go through a couple of things in the audit report itself. And then I'm also going to go through the communication with those charged with governance letter. And Melissa, I don't know, is it possible to share those two documents? Kind of like bring them up on the screen?
If we could share the audit one on the screen, that would be great.
Yes, give me one second, and then I can do that.
Perfect. So I'll actually start with the communication letter, just because that has a nice little introduction. And then I'll jump over to the audit report. And so I'm gonna be kind of alternating between reading from the letter and then I'll kind of try and do my best to translate that into layman's terms. So the communication letter is to inform the City Council of the City of Port Orford about significant matters related to the conduct of our audit. And so that we can appropriately discharge our, you can appropriately discharge your oversight responsibility and we can comply with our professional standards. Below that, you'll see that the title is "Our Responsibilities With Regard To The Financial Statement." And this is when I always like to jump over to the audit report itself. Because in the independent auditor's report, there's a really good description of our responsibilities as your auditors and then also management's responsibilities. Perfect. So if you could scroll down to page A1, which is this page right here, the next page. Perfect. So the very first paragraph, I'm gonna just read a couple of lines from there, because this is of course what most people want to know. And that is that we have audited the financial statements of the City of Port Orford as of and for the year ending June 30th, 2024, and the related notes. And we give two opinions in this case. So we give a qualified opinion on governmental activities. So in our opinion, except for the matter described in the basis for qualified and unmodified opinion section of the financial statements, they fairly present in all material respects the governmental activities of the city. And if you kind of just scroll to the top of the next page, you'll see the matter giving rise to qualified opinion on governmental activities. And so this was due to the fact that the city had not obtained an actuarial valuation for its single employer, other post-employment benefit plan. And of course, GAAP does say that long-term liabilities and associated expenses should be recorded. And so as this wasn't recorded, the amount by which this departure would affect the ending net position of the city and the change in net position has not been determined. So basically, this is a lot of words that essentially say, because you didn't obtain this actuarial valuation, we don't know how much omitting that affects the financial statements. And this is something that should drop off next year as going forward, Melissa and team have obtained that actuarial valuation. Does anybody have any questions about that before I move on? Because I know that's kind of a confusing topic.
I, this is the mayor, and I'm just kind of, would like to understand, is that something that has to happen every year? And is that something, I remember in the budgeting process, it seems like it's something to get, hard to get your arms around what that's going to be into the future. So any tips for us about how to think about that?
You know, so technically, you should be obtaining that valuation for each year. Normally, the actuaries will do it in kind of like a two-year chunk. So usually get it for two years at a time. And they've recently rolled out a kind of like an expedited process for doing that. I think, I think they're using AI or something to do it in a much more efficient way. So it's not quite a manual process. You know, so it is required that you obtain that. That being said, and I think I mentioned this before, we do have a number of smaller municipalities that elect to just not obtain it. And then they continue to get this qualified opinion over governmental activities. But they basically go, they'd rather get that qualified opinion than pay the, to get the actuarial valuation.
I guess I'm thinking this actually is important for us to understand in our budgeting process as well as in our auditing process. So that's the, let's just make a flag on that.
Well, and we have, we have done it because it's something that you have to get the, when, when it happens. And it was, it's like a thing that you can basically order through our company CIS. And then you get a report from Milliman Group, I think is the name of it. And you just do it every year. But for those years, these last couple of years, they didn't do it. And I don't have a time turner to go back to 23 and 24 to make that happen. And so we just, on this situation, have to take the ding. However, once we understood what had happened, now we have it ordered moving forward. So it's a few hundred dollars that we have to pay to keep this off our audit. And again, now we know.
Okay, thank you for.
Yeah, and it's really nice that they did create that kind of expedited process because it used to cost significantly more as well. Okay, so I'm just gonna kind of jump to that next paragraph. Unmodified opinion on governmental funds, enterprise funds, and aggregate remaining fund information. So in our opinion, sorry, that's actually on the first page, Joseph, that page A1. Just, just went past it there.
That's it.
Sorry. So in our opinion, the accompanying financial statements present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of each major fund of the city and the respective changes in financial position in accordance with GAAP. So basically, you guys got a clean opinion other than this qualified opinion over the governmental activities for not having the actuarial report. And like Melissa mentioned, that should go away next year as well. So if you scroll to the next page, you'll see some definitions of management's responsibilities and then our responsibilities as your auditors. I always just like to kind of refresh and go over these. So management's responsibilities, which is the paragraph above that, perfect. Management is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements in accordance with GAAP and for the design, implementation, and maintenance of internal control relevant to the preparation and fair presentation of financial statements that are free from material misstatement, whether due to fraud or error. So I always like to just point this out that, you know, we do assist with preparation of the financial statements, but ultimately, management reviews and takes responsibility for those and also for any adjustments that we have proposed. So we're merely assisting. And below that, you'll see our responsibilities as your auditors. So our objective is to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements as a whole are free from material misstatement, whether due to fraud or error, and to issue an auditor's report that includes our opinions. So reasonable assurance is a high level of assurance, but is not absolute assurance. And therefore, it's not a guarantee that an audit conducted in accordance with GAAP or generally accepted auditing standards will always detect a material misstatement when it exists. The risk of not detecting a material misstatement resulting from fraud is higher than one resulting from error as fraud may involve collusion, forgery, intentional omissions, misrepresentations, or the override of internal control. So kind of two big points here. You know, reasonable assurance, it essentially means that we cannot provide absolute assurance. You know, audit procedures, we look at things on a test basis. You know, we obviously look at significant transactions and then a sample of all transactions. So it's very possible that we can miss things. You know, that being said, you know, we are, we're pretty thorough. And, and again, another thing to keep in mind here is that the audit, while we do stay vigilant for any indications of fraud, you know, the audit is not, the purpose of the audit is not to detect fraud. The purpose of the audit is to make sure that the numbers and the notes in the financial statements are materially correct. So now I'm gonna jump to the very last page or the second to last page of the audit, Joseph. Unless anybody has any questions about that section.
What number is the second?
Fifty-eight. So basically, if you scroll all the way to the very end and then you come back one page, you'll find a second auditor's report that's required by Oregon State Regulations. So as part of obtaining reasonable assurance about whether the city's financial statements are free from material misstatement, we did perform certain tests of compliance, there it is, with certain provisions of laws, regulations, contracts, and grants, including the provisions of the Oregon revised statutes, which could have a direct and material effect on the determination of financial statement amounts. If you scroll down a little bit, you'll see a number of bullet points. These are all the areas that the state of Oregon asks us to address. And so in connection with our audit, nothing came to our attention that caused us to believe the city was not in substantial compliance, except as reported in note two of the financial statements. And you're welcome to kind of scroll over to note two. But basically, what note two says is you exceeded your spending appropriation in certain categories. And that's kind of all the way at the beginning of the audit. We don't necessarily need to go all the way back there. Any questions about the Oregon report before I jump back over to the communication letter?
So what is the note two that you're talking about and where is that?
So note two is on page page 17. And then the, the budget violations are on page 18. You know, and so this is one of those situations. Budget violations are because of exceeding appropriations in certain spending categories. And those can only be corrected during the year through transfers of appropriations or supplemental budgets. And so, you know, once you get past June 30th, 2024, that's it. You can't, can't do anything at that point. So this is, you just passed it right there. So kind of water under the audit bridge, if you will.
Is that something we make, we correct in the, that we will correct in the following year's budget? Even though it's water under the bridge for this year's budget?
Yeah, next year's budget is kind of next year's budget. It's gonna be its own, you know.
I mean, next year's audit, I'm sorry.
Nope, these are just, you know, you exceeded the appropriation in this year and we note it in the audit. And then, you know, it just, we just kind of moved to the next year. There's, there's no follow-up or anything like that.
Okay.
It's kind of like a slap on the wrist, really.
So it just means, I think this year, we did, we worked with Ann Heath for the recent year to make sure we had supplemental budget right there at the end to correct things as best we could. So hopefully.
So this was just the bridge between the, in the.
Well, yeah, it's, it's between the June 30th and July 1st. So you kind of have to have a foot in both, in both places during that time. And so there were places where it went over on these couple of places. But then you.
You don't have to pay.
You have a supplemental budget to make sure that it's.
And if you recall, this is what's so confusing is we, we were really in the throes, I think, of the budget this year. This is the budget year ending, not this year, but in 2024.
So this is fiscal year 25?
This.
No, this is fiscal yield 24. So it was end of 23, beginning at 24. So this is, right. So, so some of these things were during that real transition when we had like
We were on fire.
changing of various staff and so anyway.
That's not bad, then.
Exactly.
Okay, yeah, it's great to have you point this out, Ben, so that we all can be, have these things on our mind as we try to learn from our mistakes moving forward.
Absolutely. That's all I have from the audit report. Joseph, I don't know if you happen to have the letter handy?
This is.
If not, it's fine. I can just kind of, I can go over it. And of course, welcome to go over it at your leisure as well.
All the councilors have a copy of it, so they do have it. If you give, I wonder if this doesn't have page numbers on it.
This is the one that starts with, this letter is to inform the City Council.
That's in your, your packet. It's actually in your packet. You have, you do have this. I just didn't print off the 80.
Eighty-nine pages.
Correct. Yeah, that actually. You have these letters in your packet.
So it's the one that starts, this letter is to inform the City Council.
Right, or mine it is.
So if you start at the bottom of that first page, we already covered management's responsibilities and our responsibilities. You'll see significant accounting policies. So management is responsible for the selection and use of appropriate accounting policies. The summary of the significant accounting policies is included in note one of the financial statements. No matters have come to our attention that would require us, under professional standards, to inform you about A, the methods used to account for significant unusual track, unusual transaction, excuse me, and B, the effect of significant accounting policies in controversial or emerging areas for which there is a lack of authoritative guidance or consensus. Heading to the next page, you'll see the section Significant Accounting Estimates. So accounting estimates are an integral part of the financial statements prepared by management and are based on management's knowledge and experience about past and current events and assumptions about future events. Certain accounting estimates are particularly sensitive because of their significance to the financial statements and because of the possibility that future events may differ significantly from those expected. So the most sensitive estimates affecting the city's financial statements were management's estimate of the property taxes receivable, which is based on information obtained from the Curry County Tax Department; management's estimate for allowance for uncollectible accounts, which is based on historical collection rates, and that's most significant for citations; management's estimate of depreciation expense, which is based on standard calculations incorporating estimated useful lives; and then management's estimate of the post-employment benefit and the net pension liability, which are based on information provided by Oregon Pers. And that information, of course, is subject to significant assumptions. So for each of these estimates, we did evaluate the key factors and assumptions used to develop the estimate in determining that they are reasonable in relation to the financial statements as a whole. Any questions about estimates? And of course, anyone can feel free to chime in with a question anytime. I should have mentioned that earlier. So at the bottom of that page, you'll see that financial statement disclosures. So certain financial statement disclosures involve significant judgment are particularly sensitive because of their significance. The most sensitive disclosures affecting the city's financial statements were the disclosure of the pension obligations and the disclosure of the other post-employment benefits. And again, that's just because those are based on significant assumptions and also the magnitude of the balances. So at the top of the next page, you'll see the section Audit Adjustments and Uncorrected Misstatements. So during the audit, we did propose several material adjustments. And these were mostly to record and adjust year-end accruals. And we're not aware of any uncorrected misstatements in the financial statements other than those that are clearly trivial. Regarding disagreements with management, happy to say that we had no disagreements with management during the course of the audit. Regarding consultations with other accountants, we are not aware of any consultations management had with any other accountants about accounting or auditing matters other than the advisory assistance provided by Ann Heath, of course. So in the normal course of professional association with the city, we do discuss a variety of matters. And of course, we just want to say that none of those matters discussed resulted in a condition to our retention as the city's auditors. So jumping to the final page, really the last point here is just the management representations. And I just always like to highlight this because we do obtain a management representation letter signed by management. And that is management attesting that all of the information provided was accurate and that they are taking responsibility for those financial statements. So at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions anyone might have. Or of course, if anyone thinks of anything at a later date, we're always available to answer questions.
I just had one little question. When you use the word sensitive, like when you were just describing the word sensitive, are you using that term to describe that it, that, that the term is very, like that the results are very responsive to that element? Or I don't quite understand that your use of that word.
Yeah, I mean, I think sensitive just in the fact that they are that they're kind of, they're, they're meaningful. You know, this actually comes from a standard template. And so it's interesting because they do use that word twice. And I think it just is because, again, those are the, those are the estimates and notes that, you know, they're based on significant assumptions. And so I think that is kind of what makes them sensitive as well.
Yeah, no, that helps me to understand it, Ben. I just was wanting to make sure I was understanding what that word meant in that context. Because that seems like the language of auditing has different nuances.
It's definitely. It's definitely a little bit of a foreign language. My, I, my wife's eyes definitely kind of glaze over whenever I talk to her about auditing.
Oh, well, good. I'm glad I'm not the only one. Uh, no offense. Does anybody have any other questions? From council? No? Okay. Well, um, excellent. Well, thank you, Ben. Uh, so with that, I think at this point, we have a corrective. I, I, I don't think we need anything else from you at this point, Ben. Is that correct? We have our corrective action plan to review and to approve at this point. Anything else we need with you?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, excellent. Well, thank you so much for coming and, and joining us this evening. And I'm so grateful, uh, Melissa, to get a good report and appreciate that you and Deena really helped to. Get this one through. Um, it's a really positive thing coming out of a rough time as we were reflecting. So.
I would add Joseph as well, because it's kind of, it's a team effort to get all the documentation and all the things together. So it was definitely all hands on deck during a pretty tumultuous time with that. And so, um, we have a really, really good team and Ann Heath obviously led, uh, helped with, um, some of that as well. So.
Excellent. Well, yes, thank you. Thank you all. And please share that with Deena and thank you, Joseph. Okay, Ben, well, thank you so much and. We will see you next year.
Absolutely. Thank you, everyone. And thank you for allowing me to present and, uh, for allowing us to be of continued service to the city. We appreciate you very much.
Okay, good evening.
We appreciate your patience, Ben. Thank you.
Thank you. You as well.
Okay, so everyone, we have in our, uh, docket here, uh. A plan of action for the city of Port Orford, and this is a corrective action plan. As you heard in the audit, um, there is, you know, this. Weakness that was found, uh, which is minor. And then we as a city have to propose an action plan to address it. A lot of this is already in progress, but you can just review these, um. These items that Melissa has put together and we will, um, and then I would entertain a motion to. Accept the, approve the corrective action plan. I don't think we have to accept the audit, Ben said. It's just. That's what he told me the other day.
We usually accept the audit, but that's fine.
Well, we can. He said we can if we'd like to. We don't have to, but we can. So if you would like to, he said it's just sort of, it's not, uh. A requirement, but if, if we would like to do that first, you're, I would entertain a motion to accept the audit if you'd like to do that.
I had one question on this letter.
Okay.
In the past, to my, the best of my recollection, we'd only been dinged one other time where we had sent a letter. But I think at that time, the auditors sent the letter on our behalf because they had to report.
Yeah. So we have to, you have to sign it and then we send it to them and then they send it forward.
Okay. So it's the same kind of a situation.
Correct. Yeah.
Okay.
We have to get it signed and sent.
A little bit differently, but that's, I mean, it's fine.
It's the template from last year and it's the one they sent us.
But the one I'm thinking of was prior year before. No, I know we've had some trouble the last few years, trust me.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're.
We're, we're, we're at sea level right now, though. We made it. We, we've gotten three of these audits taken care of.
We're catching up.
We're catching up.
Correct.
Yeah, it's a huge.
It's a huge. And you can see why we don't want to ever get behind again on these audits.
Yes.
Because it's.
We just don't have the horse.
It doesn't get any cheaper either.
No, it becomes more and more expensive. Yes.
And the more efficient we can make the whole process for staff. And that's what's really good is even though this last one was such a lift. Getting it set up will hopefully make it easier moving forward.
The way ends.
You don't bill a flat rate then. It's an hourly rate. I forget how they bill it. Does the auditor? Look, does he give us, bill us a flat rate or is it hours and material? How's he do it?
Both. So, so if it's just kind of a standard audit and it goes through and it's not, aren't too many things. And we can provide what they need to see, then it's the flat rate that we have set. But if they have to step in and, which is I think what happened with your 2022 audit was that you had, they had to go into a deeper like forensic audit. And there weren't things that were there. So they had to do a lot of the work to dig through and find, which is when it becomes more expensive.
It doubled or tripled, I think.
Yeah. And we had a few things that they, to, to KDP's credit and to Ann Heath's credit. Fought for us to say, this is something that they didn't have that they, you know, you need to help them out, not just say, you need to provide this. She did a really good job of, you know. Pleading our case to them. And there were a couple of things that they helped us out with gratis to help, just because we, we weren't able to do it. And so, um, but it's interesting because what's hard for us in smaller cities and working with a bigger group like KDP. Is they basically say, okay, I'm going to put these eight people on working with Port Orford for these three weeks. Well, if Deena's only here part-time and I can only get so many things and he can only get so many things and Ann can only write so many things at a time. We can't keep up with what they're doing because they send a portal basically. And they'll say, we need, in this section, we need A, B, C, D. And then in section two, they need A, B, C, D, E, F. And then sometimes, once they really get into it. One person that has already looked at things earlier, another person will request the same thing again. And so that's when Deena's, you know, head starts to go because it's, 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 it's hard and it's infuriating. And, and that has to be the focus of what you're doing. And those of you that, you know, come in and see how the office goes. It's not often that there's just weeks on end that you can, Deena could just focus just on this. I mean, there's always things. And so it's, it, that, that's one thing that makes it hard for us is that we are such a small staff. And again, our financial staff is part-time, way, way part-time. So.
And this, this process too, was a transition between our, uh, David Johnson and new staff and new. And so, you know, he may have had his system to just do it. And now the new crew is needing to come up with their system. So.
Right.
I would make a motion to approve the corrective action plan for the 2024 audit.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Okay, I'll call for the vote. Counselor Rask?
Yes.
Counselor Webb?
Webb, yes.
Counselor Brennan?
Yes.
Counselor Burns?
Yes.
Counselor Pogwist?
Him, yes.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. That's a, again, a big thing done.
Yes.
And makes me feel like we are on, on a much better path moving forward.
Can I make a motion to accept the audit?
Please. Yes, I entertain that motion.
I would make a motion to approve the audit.
I would second that.
Any further discussion? We will call for the vote. Counselor Brennan?
Yes.
Counselor Burns?
Yes.
Counselor Pogwist?
Him, yes.
Counselor Webb?
Webb, yes.
Counselor Rask?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so now we will go get back to, um, our agenda and we'll move on to departmental reports. So Melissa, you have the first report.
Okay. You have the information there, but I do have a couple, um, things. I do have those OLCC license and the. Right away permits. If you want to actually look at them, I didn't, again, print them all off for everyone, but, um, you asked that I bring them. And so I, I brought those for you. Uh, another, uh. One issue that we do have is, and that's on page 11 of your report there of the second bullet. Uh, right away permit, possible variance for the dark sky ordinance. The Port Gorford, um, Main Street push that they are doing for a fun Halloween events. The website's awesome. Go check it out. It's pretty cool. Um, one of the things in the dark sky ordinance, it says. That it's from, holiday lights are acceptable, but they run from November through January and this would be in October. And so, um, at this point, they're just asking, because they are doing a downtown businesses are asked to. You know, spruce up their storefronts and kind of get into spooky season, that if they want to use lights, they, uh, the question was. If it was, be okay to do that. Moving forward, they're talking about possibly putting kind of like old timey. Lights on the poles, on the power poles throughout. That's not this year. They don't have that together yet. This, at this point is only for the businesses if they choose to use lights. But I didn't want to make that decision. I wanted you folks to weigh in on all that.
We can't really just override an ordinance.
Yeah, we can't do that without, we can't do it. I mean, you can't do it.
Ignore things. I mean, that's all you can do.
Well, I mean, I think we, I mean, we could have asked them if they wanted to propose a variance. That's the process would be they'd have to come and do it. I don't, I agree with Brett. We can't just say, oh, we're not going to follow this rule.
But I think that.
We do it all the time.
We do, we do it all the time, but.
I understand what you're saying 100%. But.
Complaint driven ordinance and present. And so I'm not going to complain.
I'm not going to complain.
I think what I would feel more comfortable doing is asking the, um, Port Orford Planning Commission to just. Uh, review it and make, I mean, to just go through the process and.
Change it to holiday lights?
Change it to holiday lights, maybe make it mid-October through mid.
Well, but then you got the Fourth of July.
That's a lot of, that's a lot of light in the sky, man. Until the Fourth of July.
Yes, Joseph.
So the planning commission has already been reviewing the dark sky ordinance. Uh, that's how we were aware of the timeframe for the lights, the holiday lights. Uh, their new proposal is holiday lights for a period not to exceed three months at a time. So that way you can do it for Halloween or, uh, you know, winter holidays. Or you could have lights out for Fourth of July, uh, as long as you don't have them up year round, then you're good.
Okay.
So if we, if they went from mid-October, then they could go to mid-January.
That's my math.
I believe so. Let me.
Yeah, that would be that three month period.
Yeah. And then during that time, they would, I'm assuming switch out between. Uh, Halloween lights and more traditional holiday lights, uh, as they got closer to the December, January timeframe.
I just wanted you to be aware of it as a biggest, is the biggest piece of it. And it was a, it was something that came in as, as an ask. And again, they're just getting this off the ground. And so I think they wanted to lay that.
But Melissa, I'm a little bit confused now because I thought the ask was to do it in the future, not to do it this year.
The lights on the poles are a future ask. The, the.
Business lights.
Sprucing up of businesses downtown that may want to, if in their decorating, may want to put lights around a window that are orange or purple or whatever. That, so there's kind of two separate issues, not the light poles, that's a future. But the, but if the businesses choose to use strings of lights around their front windows, this is what this is.
So they're looking to do something for the month of October.
Next month.
And then in the future, they want to think about doing something on the light poles permanent.
Just for the holiday.
For the holiday. Correct. But it would be something, apparently these are the light pole things.
With them up, same down.
That have, have been up before. They used to do them at, at Christmas time back in the days. And so, um, but they're going to have to have the plugins put back in. Cause apparently when power poles were changed out and whatever else, the plugs that they used to plug into were taken down. And so they're going to have to retrofit that. And I've looked at the lights to try and figure out the lumens and everything else. And they're, they're, these things are expensive too. So they're going to have to fundraise for them. So again, there's two separate kind of issues. What they're discussing now are just string lights that are lighting that. Businesses might use to decorate their businesses for the Port Gorford celebration.
Yeah, I had a couple of comments on the decorative lights on the power poles. They're going to need CCECs permission to do that and perhaps ODOTs.
Right. And I've talked to Ash, it's Ashley Moore who came to me about this piece. They've sort of broken it apart for this Main Street group. And we, she, she's aware of that, which is why they're not trying to do it now. And interestingly enough, she said, the main owners of the power poles now are zipli. And so they're actually getting, so it's going to be ODOT right away. And that's what I said. I was like, you, you, I'm not, you can't do that right now.
Well, I know somebody that put a camera on a CCEC pole and they made them take it down. What I'm trying to say is they're, they used to be very strict about it. I don't know what they are today or next week or next year.
And again, that's a Main Street, this is a Main Street push. And so they, I, I have said that if they're running them down.
To that, to bolster your, your statement, the, there was, um. National Marine Fisheries, uh, law enforcement camera that was secret, top secret. And it was pointing at the port for years. And when they found out about it, he was, "Curry, man, take it down."
I'll be darned.
So I'm saying like they are serious about putting stuff on the poles.
Well, I, I think, um, like Brett, I think that, I mean, if people are reasonable in their lights to the point of not. Creating a complaint, because I mean, I do feel like our downtown is right next door to different people's houses. We have residential neighborhoods right downtown. I don't have a problem with it, but I do think if we're going to change the ordinance, it would be, I mean, I think that the appropriate. Process is to formally make the amendment. So if people have concerns, they can bring them up.
So would that be, could that maybe be done? That's a whole change. I mean, I just usually, it seems like there's some leeway for small adjustments in some of these. Or I can't remember what's making me think that. Maybe I'm thinking.
Well, we probably.
Between the readings or something. Maybe that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, we probably could, but it just seems like, I mean, I think that there, there might be a few other adjustments that could be, uh, helpful. To make that ordinance work better anyway. So if they want to work on that, to me, I think that's a good idea.
A while ago. And there were some people that got pretty upset that we were even going to open that page of the book. Because it was such a contentious issue at the time. I think Tim, we could speak to that.
Yeah. I think we've done a really good job over the years to make that ordinance a pretty decent ordinance. And we tried to be respectful at the time on the holiday lights, but somehow we missed.
Like nowadays, everybody, you know, you want lights for hollow, for Valentine's Day and for, I mean, who would have thunk everything would be so.
But to say that people have been doing this all along.
Yeah.
And we haven't said a word to anybody about it. It must not be causing too many problems. But I get what you're saying.
Yeah.
We just don't want to, you know.
Yeah.
Have terrible glare, you know?
Yeah.
I was in a city somewhere dark where somebody had these LED lights shining towards a highway and I. Maybe it was.
Douglas County.
Turn away because I was blinded driving.
Well, and, and a lot of those holiday lights, I don't know if you've made the mistake yourself of buying some of the, some of those LED lights that are too bright even. Anyway, okay. Well, so you have enough guidance on that.
And I think mostly it's that to, to be aware of it and then, um, looking at the planning commission to.
Yeah, I appreciate that they were going to look at that. So let's.
I guess I just like clarification. What I've taken from this is the council's direct route to the planning commission to review the Port Gorford lights proposal as a variance. And to review the dark sky ordinance for a proposal to the city council.
Uh, I don't think we need them to do it as a variance. I think we just need them to review the. In their, to review the ordinance for updates, including this one and report back to council.
Yeah. Thank you.
Is what I would say. Is that okay with everybody?
And I had one question. I'm on the co-op board and we were discussing the closing of that street for that period. And we were discussing how to block it off. And we're wondering if we could use cars to block it off or what would be the best.
I, I think in, in what we had, one of the suggestions from, um, Chief Hobart is to, to create just barricade. To have, to have barricades. I don't know that putting the cars there, but to have kind of the. Like, like they would, yes.
Do we have those? Does the city have those or would the co-op need to?
The, the co-op and Dragonfly would need to come up with something for that. Um, you could, I know for Jubilee. John Isidore, there were a few that they had borrowed, but we don't have all that many around. And so those, that is something that it would be good to, um, ask him, but I don't know. I don't know if they all came back or what. He's kind of in charge of that set of equipment. So, um.
I was wondering if one end, like, um, toward Washington Street, if that was blocked off by cars. And then the other one just had the barricades. I was thinking mostly if there was an ambulance in it to get in or.
That's a big thing about blocking it with a permanent.
Yeah.
You know, where's the keys to Toyota kind of thing? If there's a, and that's the problem in these bigger cities where these people come driving through parades and stuff. They're scared to put those kinds of barricades because if there's a, there needs to be an ambulance or a fire truck in there and they can't get in there. Kind of thing. And I may be shooting for the stars, but our luck, we would put cars there and guess what? There'd be a fire half a block down.
Do you think one end would be all right or?
I don't know. I mean, I, that's.
I would talk to chief about it and, and just, I don't think we have to make the decision, but I would talk to the chief and I.
How do we block off the highway for the Fourth of July? Cones and.
I think cones are.
They get those from Oga.
I would just check what the.
The cones. Yeah.
So we have some of those things, but again, I know he was loathe to just lend them out willy-nilly because we'd had trouble with them coming back. And so I think just those wooden barricades that would go across just to demarcate that. And my understanding is it's not the entire road. It's just the part that would be right there across because it's. Road, it's just the part that would be right there across because it's, it's. In conjunction with the co-op and that Dragonfly nursery to just block off that one part that's kind of between those two businesses, so the other end. Not the whole length of the road, it's just a proportion of it.
Was that Seventh Street? Is that what that is?
Eighth Street, it's called the Eighth Street bash. Yep, so that's, that's what we have for the rights of ways and.
And what about, just, can you give us an update about on here the finance contractor job and how that's going? So I.
Super important. Yes, it is. So I received an email actually today from Ann Heath. I think I mentioned before that she is now the interim. City Administrator down in Gold Beach. She is feeling, because she's down there two full weeks each month, that she's just being squeezed for time. And so she will continue, you know, if I need to reach out to talk to her about something, kind of a phone a friend situation, she's good with that. But I think. We have that job posted and out, and we have it posted at the League of Oregon Cities. We have it at a governmental organization that. Ann Heath said this is a good place where people look for jobs. We have it obviously on our website. We have it all out and about. But we're looking at something pretty niche because it's only part time and it's a consultant, and so. Here's hoping, because what, what we do need help with more and that kind of on, boots on the ground piece is with audit and with budget. And Ann plans to go and do her travels in the spring like she did this last year. She's going to go travel and hike in Scotland. And so she's just not going to be available, and that's when we really actually need someone very much here and engaged with us and, and more time with us. And so she's been really great, particularly for me to bounce ideas off of and having good conversations with. The mayor and I of kind of where we're at, because she's just has such a wealth of knowledge and.
And I think also helping the departmental staff understand their budgeting much better. I think that's been a real benefit she's brought to us.
Yes, for sure. So, so we do still have that open. We are actively looking for that. I've actually called. Some of the municipalities down here, you know, trying to talk to some of their people. Do you know anyone? What do you know about this? And so that's. So I'm beating the bushes on that one.
I'm a little bit concerned about how our website being down might affect it, like are all the things that we're putting out linked? You know, like if we posted it on LOC, does it link to our website?
No.
The LOC postings on League of Oregon Cities Job Board and the Oregon Government Finance Officers Association. Both have their own basically copies of the part time.
Great, yep, the job description.
Job description up there. They do make references to coming to our website for more information, but. Everything that someone would need to know about the job is on those places, and they have been directed to submit applications to.
Okay, so it shouldn't, it shouldn't impact it these last few days, but.
Any progress there on that? Website?
Tentatively.
Since yesterday when I talked to you.
Yeah, since yesterday, it's come back up, but I don't want to say that.
Okay, we'll knock on wood for you.
You're not bragging yet.
No, it's not bragging.
So is that in association with the transition to .gov or is it just, it's just normal?
Why don't you come speak into the microphone because this is something that people have concerned about.
So it was a different tech issue. It was not involving the transition to the .gov.
Okay, any other questions for Administrator Radcliffe?
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I have one more thing that was, that is very exciting that we were not able to share, but I just got the email this afternoon. So from the Oregon Parks Group, it says, "It's official. We are pleased to report that the OPRD Commission met and approved all 2025 local government grant awards recommended. By the Advisory Committee, so we can make a public announcement that the Parks Planning, Master Planning Grant that we submitted. With Skydra, did huge work on that, Commissioner, or Commissioner, Counselor Lovendall. Worked on that and it, we, we were awarded that info, that money. So we're excited about that. That just came hot off the presses, so. Congratulations to those folks. It was hard work and now we continue now because yay, we got the grant. Oh, we got the grant. We're excited, so.
Yeah, right. The good thing about some of these grants is hopefully we can find the person to do it and then pass it off. But as we know, there's always all, a lot of work in the background, but hopefully that one will be not too hard, but we'll see. Excellent. Well, thank you for sharing that news. So I had already given you guys a little bit of an overview of highlights of my mayor's report. And I will be talking more about the water parts of that later on, but if anybody has any other questions that you can ask me or we'll just.
Do we have any ideas on the feasibility study for the?
I, we've been told by the engineer end of September. I would not be surprised. Later than that, but that's what we've been told.
And then after that, we can proceed with. Planning how we're going to approach.
Yeah, and so what I, what I outlined in here is what we've said before, that we're going to. Get that feasibility study and then arrange a work session with council to discuss the feasibility study and the proposal. And how we'd like to move forward and then go back to ERPD. And that to me seems like a good way to go because then we are informed. We have the information that we've hopefully wanted to know. And then.
To make a. MoU. Practical one.
You've met with Alan Mitchell.
He's doing great, and he actually came down and brought us up to date booklets about. Former Mayor Leon White from the seventies and passed out a few copies of Fool's Hill to gave one to Joseph and. So it was always, it's always fun to see.
Did he write Fool's Hill?
But it's a fun book about our town. Okay, so we will move along to finance. Melissa, is there anything that you want to highlight for us? In these finance reports? That I guess Ann has sent to us?
Not really. This is the time when, when we're still working on the end of year information, so. Ben was just talking about wrapping up the end of the year and doing the, the, you know, getting the supplemental budget. We did that, but then now we're adding it up. We haven't gotten it all the way up to Tyler to be able to do that end of the year final wrap up. There are some things that they want us to do. Some of the corrections there, and that has not been done yet, but it's on par. So we're, we're, we're doing it. And so it's just, this is just kind of the overview of where we've, where we've been. So again, like Ann kept saying, don't fall in love with these numbers and don't fall in love with this because it's just a snapshot and it's also. As again, as you're kind of bridged between two fiscal years from June 30th to July 1st. There's some things that you order and they don't show up until a little bit later, but it's actually from before, and so there's some cleanup that has to be done. And actually a, a report, it's an audit report that has to be sent into the auditors, though it's all very closely monitored. There's a snapshot there that, that has to be, a report that has to be done to make sure everything goes in the proper place and is attributed to the proper. Fiscal year, which is a really, that is a very busy time in our office. Because that's also the time when you folks, especially this year, made multiple decisions about finances and what would happen, so all of that had to be. Put into the computer. And picked up and done and tried to get all those things taken care of in that very short window before the next round of bills came out and all of that, so. That's, that's, I've discovered that that is a super stressy time in our office, so I'm kind of. No, I'm happy to say, you know, hopefully coming towards winter with fewer people in town and hopefully fewer water issues that we can. Everyone can just take a beat.
We have a contingency plan for the culvert if it's not, we haven't gotten any biz, right?
Correct. Our, our plan. We do, it is, it's, they'll be in depth, yeah.
Can I bring your attention to the street fund? At the top, the fold out. I just have one question on that. It's probably the second to the last of the large fold out. Anyway, at the top it says street fund, and I'm assuming in the yellow box it says water fund, but I think. That water fund just gets crossed out and it is street fund, but the bigger question is. Is the $63,000 transfer for, for the street fund or is it for the water fund? That's the only question I really have about it. You see what I'm saying?
Yes. There, I would believe that was for the water fund. Because we didn't put that much money back into streets.
That's what I thought, but it doesn't say that on the water fund on the next page.
So my only thought on that is that based upon. Based upon. I might be rethinking my thought, because now the funds pay into the general fund to pay for public works. And so that might be that, that's it, that, that the street fund should be pushing that amount of money into for its. Percentage of what the public works, workers do for streets. But because we don't have that fund, again, the streets fund is hard because it doesn't really have its own funding. You know, a really robust funding stream, which means it doesn't have the money to do that transfer.
I wouldn't call her on this, but when you see her next time, maybe just mention then the report, it said street fund at the top, water fund at the bottom. And we were just wondering about the transfer. I'm assuming it should just stay street fund in that yellow box because it says street. Bet my life on it. Because I know. I don't know, maybe we are going to transfer 63 from the general fund to the street fund. I just don't know.
I don't believe so because what I keep hearing is that we did, well, we didn't get that ODOT grant. And so basically what the money has for streets is a pallet of quickcrete, and that's about the end of it, which is. Prices are bad, but I don't think it's $63,000 yet.
And that's why I believe that's the case too. Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to go on to public works and John Isidore is not here tonight because he. Drove up to get the vaccon truck and we, Melissa, do you want to just give an update about that vaccon truck?
Right, so one of the things that has been difficult for our public works people is that the, the vacuum truck, the vaccon. That we have had before is old and it has leaks in the top of it, so if ever they were doing water repairs, you would see it spraying. Water and dirt and muck out the side. It's been a problem for customers. It's been a problem for our fellows. They look like. I don't know, little chocolate covered creatures when they come out of working with that, and so they're also the, which isn't as bad, but the driving of it. John keeps talking about the clutch in one part. I don't know if it's the vacuum part or the actual vehicle, but. He can no longer find those parts on eBay even to, to continue to, to fix this truck. So this has been an ask. It's something that with the equipment fund, we've put money into the equipment fund with. Water and sewer, because if it's not blowing things, you could actually use it for sewer as well, for fixes, and so. John went on an online auction of governmental groups that sell these multiple things. He threw multiple times. We had to make sure and we last month got the approval to, to do that through this body. He found a. One in Bonners Ferry, Idaho. We won the bid. We had to wire money to get it. It's all done. John and Brad drove to Bonners Ferry, Idaho a couple of days ago. They went and poured over this vehicle with the Bonners Ferry Public Works people and mechanic and everything else to learn how to do it. A big training time, and they just got home tonight. I think they left Tuesday morning at three in the morning to drive up there and they got back tonight. About the time this meeting was started. They're very excited about it. They're happy. It hadn't had very many miles on it because Bonners Ferry is a very tiny town like ours. And so they were very excited about their, their upgrade, and so they feel it'll be able to help them. Do leak. Fixes better, so it's, that's a, that's a win for the Public Works Department.
Are we going to auction the other truck in a timely manner?
That is the expectation.
Very good. Well.
That is the expectation. No, I understand that.
Seen equipment sit over there and rot in the ground.
And that was.
John's been way better, don't get me wrong.
Correct, and I think he and Hank Chief are working on, on those things because there's things over there that.
That's the only reason I asked the question because I see it with my own eyes.
I was thinking that the other day, that everybody has the things that drive them up a wall, and so when you drive around town, you know, it's like. Different people have different things and probably.
Everybody has a peeve and everybody has a problem.
Truck's still worth money and that money can go back into that equipment fund.
That'd be great.
Obviously we decide, but I mean, I think it could and it should, so all I'm saying is.
I wonder, I would like to remind you of this discussion when we get a little bit later, when we're talking about the things that take the time to just do the ABCs of governance. And just doing the things that keep.
I understand completely.
Okay, so we're gonna, I'm going to maybe highlight a few of the other items on the public works. List here because they will come up with our water priorities and things. So two things I want to star for you, I think. I forget if we talked at the last meeting about how John Isidore had identified that we were having some serious problems with our filtration system. Both the tubes, filters and the, the medium that the water has to go through. And so he was trying to, he did some technical work, got technical assistance from. OAWU, the Oregon Association of Water Utilities kind of people, and he was looking for out to vendors for. Estimates on how, how much it's going to cost to repair it. It's a very important repair that, that is becoming more urgent for us that kind of. It was on the water master plan like 12 years ago, but it has kind of flipped over to being more urgent. If you look at the top line, the water plant ran 14 24 hour days. Because of this filtration system. It is eating us alive in overtime costs and in wear and tear on the plant. And this thing is kind of getting worse and worse, so this, this situation has like leapfrogged to being our top. Water infrastructure priority.
Water if it went out.
How much is the fix?
We have a current estimate. We don't know yet, actually. We don't have a current estimate. There is in my thing about the water priorities, there's two ways to look at it. One of it is sort of replacing the things we have. And the other is to kind of like upgrade the whole system. We have.
Use our infrastructure funds if we're going to upgrade, right?
That's the, that's the rub. If we, like it could be a quickender to try to replace things and fix things, but we can't get the infrastructure funding. Unless we do an upgrade.
You mean SDC. So yes, that would be something that could be used.
That we have to make a determination on that because if it's, I think the upgrade thing. We have to apparently be able to show that we are, we have to show a rationale to like how much more development we can serve. So like if we replace something and upgrade it and we could add 10% more capacity. Like 10 more, 10% more houses or something. That's what we have to be able to show, and so we really need to do some more research on how.
If you increase capacity 10%, then you can use 10% of the money.
Oh, you're kidding me.
No, it's very constrained and that's, we, we have to get some more technical advice on how we can use that funding.
So I guess my, ultimately my question is, is to, that we're, you can't run without the filter. And. Failure is probably imminent.
Well, this is something I'm trying to figure out because it seemed like it was imminent, or it seems like it's coming when John was mentioning it a couple of weeks ago. And we're having this problem. It's getting worse and worse, and yet we are having trouble getting the cost estimate and we're still, he's still working on it.
Do we have a line of credit? Seems to me like given our current situation. That it might be wise of us to look into a line of credit just to have, because if this thing failed.
Yep, well, there's two things. I mean, we'll, we will. We will, we can get to that when we, we'll talk about this infrastructure funding meeting we had on Monday is on the agenda. I'll give an update and. Mention something. meeting we had on Monday is on the agenda, I'll give an update and mention something along about that idea.
Hey, do you once again, aren't I?
You're just like, you're just forward thinking, Brett. Okay, so those are like the big things to highlight, there's other stuff in here, oh, the other big thing that happened? Oh, yes, well, I was going to do the culvert under the water priorities discussion, but yes, we did not receive any bids on the culvert project, but our public works staff has proved, and we'll, we'll get back to the plan of action for that, but they have, it's a little confusing here because we say they removed the pieces of smaller culverts and really it's like a culvert complex, there's like one gigantic culvert, that's, maybe it's not gigantic, it's like 24, 20, 40, it's big.
It's not as big as what's being put up South Abandoned, but it's bigger than the little ones.
And then there were a whole bunch of kind of more, there were a couple other more like black plastic ones like this size, and so our public works guys have pulled out these with, working with Aaron Minster as a project manager, and they've done a bunch of logging on access road and they're going, so that's kind of our public works guys have done a lot of this project. The idea was to reduce the cost by using our own staff and we have, we're really fortunate because we have some public works staff now that have those skills, which is great. So, yeah, I mean, okay, let's see, and the other big public works report thing is that there was a big failure of the Lake Shore Lift Station, and initially it sounded like John was thinking, oh my gosh, they're going to have to replace the whole thing, like very emergently, but somehow he pulled a rabbit out of a hat, got the thing running again, and they've got it temporary fixed and they're working on that, so, anyway. So that's, I think, highlights.
That's another gremlin, that's, that's, use to mind itself.
Yep, so anyway, that's highlights and we'll, we can, I'll just mention that public works has been doing a lot of work lately on all these things, where between the 24-hour shifts, the extra work up on the culvert, these various repairs and problems, meetings about some of these water issues, projects, it's just, those guys are working really hard, so just to let you know.
I appreciate them.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, planning here, Joseph, do you want to give the little reporter anything to say there about?
Nothing in addition to what's been written.
Okay. Hi.
And we, is there something we need to do to suggest them working on the enforcement?
Give a, you know, give a directive for them to work on enforcement policies, that could be approved via consensus.
I think that would be. Sounds like a great next thing for them.
I think it would be a great thing, it's on our priority list.
Really pressing on them right now.
Yep, I, I would, do we have a consensus to give our planning commission the directive to do some work on that? And I'll just mention, I had, I mentioned last time Counselor Brennan is interested in this issue, and she and I had the opportunity to have a conversation with Melissa and Chair Thielen about some ideas of this and some of the preliminary ideas, I know Counselor Brennan's already worked on looking at what other communities do, things like that, just to kind of get the conver, to give us some more thoughts.
That's excellent.
Does it sound?
It kind of needs a plan because it's just so huge.
Well, it's a way to share out the work bit to bit.
Well, right now, what I'm waiting on is for the police department to kind of go over and look at ours versus some of the other cities so that when they do need to go and do, submit enforcement tagging, there's a little more, a little bit more teeth behind it, you know, I guess.
And a plant kind of.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm waiting for them to kind of review it and then Chair Thielen and I will be meeting with them and then we can move on from there.
Perfect.
That's great, so that, to me, that seems like that all works together, if you guys are doing that, then they can, they would be a great body to start making some recommendations and then could get to us.
And we, and I've put, I talked with Chief Hobart today too about that, and they're still working on that, and also that the focus on something that I think most agree on is the rights of way, that, you know, having derelict vehicles and things like that in there is, is a thing that we can really move on first, at least focus on first because it's a big issue, so we want to tackle something that we can get our, get our hands around. And so I've put on the back of the water bills the last couple of months and also in my report, you know, we need to be cleaning up the rights of way and things like that just to give people some advanced notice that they can take care of these things ahead of time, so it's not a shock when they see a tag on their vehicle that's been in the, in the right of way.
I saw that the expense will be passed down to the owner, but I wasn't clear on the owner of what, was it the car or was it the property?
I don't know that, I don't know the answer to that, my assumption would be the vehicle owner.
So this, I just, will we be held accountable if that isn't achievable, if you can't get that money from that other person? I mean, I imagine we'll have Mass Brothers tow them someplace, right, or whatever?
I don't know, I don't know who they normally use.
Oh, they're saying. If the, I guess my question is, is who, if, if in our efforts to clean up the right of ways of derelict vehicles and bill the appropriate party, will that be the owner of the vehicle or the property adjacent to the?
Do you mean after something's been towed?
Yeah, yeah, like.
Mass Brothers will deal with whoever the registered owner is if they can, because often there's, the registered owner hasn't owned the vehicle in years.
That's what I was saying.
Sitting there, and then Mass Brothers just writes it off and has it crushed eventually.
It's not the city's liability for the tow?
Uh, no, not, especially if the vehicle is close to a right of way and presents any kind of a hazard, then it's just tough luck for the, whoever owns it, and usually it's not the registered owner, and more often than not, it's not the registered owner, in my experience in Southern Oregon. A quick question for you, you said you, you were waiting for us, have you sent out any emails to my guys because I was going to have RJ and Andrew?
Yeah, and Andrew and RJ were wanting to discuss with each other, and then they're going to get back with me.
Didn't you have some like cities that you wanted us to compare to or something?
Yes.
Going to scan those or?
Look into your microphone, please, if you would just, sorry.
Yes.
I haven't seen anything yet, if you're going to include me in it.
No, I haven't sent them out yet because I was waiting to hear back from Andrew and RJ and.
My suggestion is you go ahead and send them everything you've got so it builds a fire under them.
Okay.
They're going to get busy with other casework and keep moving.
Yeah, it was that, or I'm just going to print copies at home and bring them in.
You can drop it off and we can copy it, whatever you got, not a problem.
Because I also have to give it to Mr. Thielen as well.
Who?
Greg Thielen.
Planning Chair.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Excellent, good question, Brett, so does your question answer it or not?
I think so, I mean, my, my fear was that we would all of a sudden get this giant bill for Mass, for uncollectible fees or whatever it might be.
Good question.
And it sounds like that's, Mass will eat it.
If a vehicle's registered to you, they might try that angle, or the person, they might try that angle, but I don't know how successful they'd be, honestly, I don't know. We tow vehicles all the time, usually subsequent to a traffic stop or something.
And then that's what, I guess, where I was kind of differentiating in my mind was is this would be more like a targeted cleanup exercise.
That's where I look at it, yeah, we have lots of tow, red tow slips, we had to buy a new box of them a couple of years ago, so we're good.
Good to go.
Good to go for years.
Thanks, man.
Well, and so you're saying about if we have to have a discussion about people being sent to collections or?
Yeah, so that's, it kind of brings to another piece of this, your, your liability idea. We have traffic citations that have, that are old, that have been sitting there that we haven't been able to collect on, and also utility accounts, I believe we have on our books over $10,000 worth of uncollected utility monies, but it's even worse on the citations, there's, you know, over these long years, it's almost $400,000 that are sitting there that's on our books that haven't been written off, that haven't been done. So one suggestion, well, it's kind of twofold, is to decide, and that's would be maybe your decision to say, how far back do we want to go, do we want to try to collect on things that are 25 years old? Probably not, right, because we have to figure out where those people are and how that goes.
And we could write.
Do we go back five years, do we go back 10 years, and then if that's the case and we can't get the money from those folks, then do we give a company, a collections agency, the information we have and then have those people go chase?
So Andrew was telling me that there's a state, some sort of.
Carbon or revenue, I think.
Is that what it is? There's somebody that does for a very small fee compared to like Western Merkentown or something, you know, it's like a single digit B rather than half or whatever.
My understanding is that that was being looked into, but that, and I think the account was set up, but then the actual going through and doing of it puts more of the onus on office staff to go through and do it, that's why it's a lower price because a lot more of the work is done in-house as opposed to turning something over and saying, okay, you can take 15% of whatever you collect and then we get the other, there's, that was, that was my understanding.
And I believe too that there's some, it's not just, like, there's some very technical things about it because we, we don't get all the money, the money has to be shared with those collections, with the county or the state, or there's some other things, it has to be done properly, I guess is what I'm saying, so we have to make sure that.
Assessments.
Well, I would, I would love to maybe give guidance to staff to research those options and bring it back to us so we can actually make a directive to do that, because it does seem like there might be some, it would be a benefit to us to have a clearer understanding on our budget, but also if there is revenue, it's kind of like the issue with the vehicles sitting out, if we let these just sit out, we're not, we're going to have a lesser chance of collecting them.
And isn't there some kind of liability for grants and that kind of thing when we have that?
Yes.
On our books?
We've, we've just had, we just had that with a grant where somebody was saying, well, how would, how come you, you want us to give you $200,000, you have $400,000 that you're supposed to be collecting, aren't you lame because you didn't collect it, you know, and it's, so there you have it.
Can we still pull driver's licenses?
No.
Can we legally still pull driver's licenses? I believe we can again.
I don't know.
I think we changed a lot.
It's changed so much, I don't even know.
Yeah, it's changed a lot, I think, I, what we do is if they don't pay, if they don't, we do turn it in for suspension, so they, they are suspended as they go to do that. And what has actually helped us, which has also made the summer busy, is the cutoff for the real ID was in May, and so people went to go get their real IDs in droves, and then they got there and they're like, what do you mean, I'm suspended because of a ticket out of Port Sanford, what? And so we had lots of people calling and lots of things, so we did increase our revenues for that because of that piece of it, but there's still a drawer full.
No, I understand we have a law, I believe a prior administrator went through it and pulled it all apart and said, this is a chunk you probably should write off, and this is a chunk we should pursue, and I don't.
She did, and she was moderately successful, actually, I helped her with it.
I believe, I remember, so.
Yeah.
What I'm trying to say is, if we're not pulling licenses, we probably should be.
Didn't legislate it?
What do you mean, I, I guess I don't know.
Well, you put a suspension into the state and the state won't renew their driver's license.
Yes, and we do that.
And then they, guess what, they come and see you and they say, I want to pay my bill.
And we have that.
And it's unfortunate, but.
Yeah, that is still on the books and that is still happening, that, that is, that is still.
That was my only question.
Yes, okay.
Thank you.
They just changed some law, whether you couldn't suspend for traffic infractions or something like that.
Something was changed, I read about it, but I don't deal with the court much.
And then, and then that's when the governor, around just before her, tail end of her, she, she cut a lot of people, you know, just said, okay, you don't know it anymore, you can have your license back.
I remember that.
And I was like, uh, and then, and then our current governor added to that list of people who could be reinstated without, there's something there, there's something there, I know there is, but.
Yeah, we turn in the ones, when we have, even currently, if there's, someone's failed to appear and they haven't paid their fine or whatever, we turn in paperwork to the DMV for suspension paperwork, so that, that.
So Melissa, just getting back to, I, I mean, I think it would be great if we could got, if we could ask staff to make a recommend, to work on this or to make a recommendation, but I know we're going to have this priority discussion at the end of the meeting or coming up, and I don't know how much work this is to do, but it does seem like it would be something for, in, in the category of fiscal responsibility to kind of figure out, and especially if we could, to my mind, if we could hire a collections firm to kind of outsource most of it, that would be potentially.
A load off the staff, and it would get it off our books, and we'd get some revenue.
Yeah.
Seems like that.
Or if it, if it works out, it could be a good thing.
And we have done some of that because Ann Heath, that was one of her suggestions too, and she had a, the name, something Klein maybe was the name of the company, but when I looked into it, it had gone under and it was bought by someone else that she hadn't worked with before, so we've looked into it somewhat, but I can do more of a.
I guess what I'm saying is, is, you know, look into it, and then I would assume, if you want direction from, and maybe it is just a decision you make rather than within your realm of what's important, but if, it, to me, it seems like it would be an important thing if you want council direction on it.
Could we just give consensus to Melissa to go ahead and turn it over to, turn the whole batch over and just?
I think we'd want to know what, I think we'd want to know what that contract was and the terms and stuff like that, I'm guessing.
I think we would have to approve the contract, but I think it's like, I think Brett's pretty much on to it, I think they take like 50%, they might even take more.
Yeah, and they're really ruthless, I, I mean, like, they would look, make us look really bad.
But it'd be off our books.
I get that, no, I get that, I think that there are some more reputable.
Yeah, right, yeah.
That we would want to work with rather than like Western Merkentown.
Yeah.
And I don't, I don't.
I have experience with them and it wasn't even.
It could be another, other cities that would have recommendations possibly.
Yeah, and it may be, maybe there is some reason we don't want to do it, but I'm just saying, I think it's a topic of discussion, it's not on tonight's agenda, but it, I think it's, it merits.
Can I read this to you?
More discussion.
And I think that.
The guideline, I mean, in my mind, if somebody hasn't paid in a year, then maybe that's a person should get turned into something, but if somebody makes an effort to pay within, you know, I don't know.
And we give them grace, you know, even after, even after.
We've been very, very good.
Well, and I guess I mean even currently, you know, if someone has a court date on the 18th, we don't turn it in on the 18th and say, you didn't show up, we give them, you know, some time to.
I'm sure tough outs there, there's no doubt about it.
I'd like to actually, okay, just, just a very short thing, because this is not an item that's on our agenda, I think we need to move on, but.
In 2020, Oregon passed House Bill 4210, which repealed the ability to suspend a driver's license for failure to comply with course or failure to pay fines, that's the short.
Okay.
That goes on and on, but that's.
Important to know.
Yeah.
Did you have the, you might want to share the specific number of that, or write so Melissa could write it down, but do you have it there?
House Bill 4210.
Thank you, Brett.
In 2020.
2020. Okay, so yeah, it's, I think it's a ma, it's a matter for discussion, so let us bring it back at a time when we can discuss it more. Okay, moving on, liaison reports, emergency preparation, Gary gave quite a report here, does any, do you have any highlights or does anybody have any questions for you? And of course, this is actually no longer an actual commission, so we have it here in here, but.
Do we not need it anymore, I mean, is it something that?
I think it, I think since you are the liaison in the same way that we have the watershed council, if there's important things to bring, or this is a great way that you're sharing this information with us, and if there's important things to bring, it's, it's great, is my feeling, okay? Does anybody have any questions for Gary?
I mentioned that I do have your radio and I'm kind of like trying to work through it to where I can just hand it to you with the, like, instructions and.
Okay, just let me know, thank you for that. Yeah, Gary, thank you so, so much for continuing to work on this, such an important project. Port.
Or whether the drains are halfway up.
Yeah, I noticed that.
And the, the manufacturing. And the manufacturer failed to ship the bolts. And then the bolts to assemble it and then the bolts they sent were too long. So it couldn't be assembled. And it's really been a lot of, a lot of goofy little things going on there. But that's, it's, it's breaking, it's breaking the port financially. It's really, we went from 2.1, we're like $4.5 million now.
Oh, my gosh.
So it's, it's really, we have secured a line credit just to make ends meet in case, in case something else pops up. But the-
Still moving ahead.
Really expensive. I mean, it just overnight-
Is that cost overruns basically?
No, it, we had some problems with the engineering.
Oh, okay. Upsets.
Yeah, no, I mean, we were like on our fifth, oh, all of a sudden my writing were change order. We're on fifth change order for, for like nothing. But so the engineers, and there were some surprises from the original build on it. It's been very interesting, but things are going forward. We're out of money. Taxes should be coming soon, you know, but that's the, the line credit that we were able to, well, we didn't even, we were approved for a certain amount. We didn't sign on to it. There's a thousand dollars or something. If you do apply for a line credit, it costs you a thousand dollars to do it. I forget what the name of that word is, but we're down with about $50,000 in the bank. So it's, we're scared, just scared, but just November 1st.
Stress. Super stressful. Just so you guys know, I got asked to send in a letter as the mayor of support for the seafood hub project, which I did. You know, I didn't bring it. It's, it's, as, sometimes I get asked as a mayor to send a letter of support for that kind of thing. It seemed like it was just in alignment with everything we're doing. So I did send that and anyway.
Was that the hub or the hut?
The hub, I believe, the hub.
There's a, we're doing a proof of concept exercise. It's the seafood hut. And then the hub is a different critter.
Okay. Good to know, so I don't misspeak. Just quickly, the watershed per port, the watershed council is going to be doing a service project on Monday up in, to Clear Gorse up in the watershed. So they're looking for volunteers. So that information is in the packet and contact the watershed council chair, Meg Humphrey, if you're interested. As I mentioned, we finally paid off that loan. So I went to a little celebration gathering with the watershed council to, to celebrate and also to honor Linda Tarr's role in helping to set up all the partnerships to do our, that land deal. And it was pretty fun. She actually invited everyone, or they invited everyone, but it kind of ended up coming together at the last minute. And obviously we couldn't invite everybody, so I, because of quorum things. But I just wanted to let you know that. Fire needing to report, Councilor Ronan? Okay. Okay, so we're going to move on to the old business and go through some of these. A lot of this stuff is, is interrelated and the water stuff is going to be the most important. But let's just, the way it's, thanks Hank for coming. I just, the last time we gave an update on the grant situation was in April. And so I wanted to come back and give you an update on where we're at with our grants. So the first block, if everybody has that in front of you, we can just go through it. The first block are really all the grants that we have received and like followed through on the projects and got them completed. So that's really great. We got all those done this year. The second block are things that are in progress. So the first one is the planning loan for removing the culvert. So we got all of the engineering done to remove the culvert. And we've spent some of the money there to do the permitting and to put the project out to bid and all that kind of stuff. And so, you know, it's kind of like we got through identifying the problem, doing, getting the grant to do the planning and engineering, and then doing the permitting, putting the bids out, all those steps. And then we didn't get any bids. So I will talk about what we're going to do further, but I just wanted to kind of highlight all the steps that go into like getting anything done.
Did you go into one thought?
Yes.
Yes. And then we had the, our community development block grant. That is on the community building. Things are progressing really well with that. We're going to give a little presentation here soon on that. So that's plugging along. We have this other TDBG grant for a raw water tank that is in progress. The preliminary part, the planning is in progress on that. And then that puts us into the lane to go back and get a, a construction grant next year. Our dredging grant, we got a grant for about $223,000 to dredge our reservoir and provide for the water supply during that dredging. And we will, again, we went through all of the steps. We did, we had to get our permit for dredging. We had to do the engineering and planning for that project. We had to put it out to bid. And then we only got one bid that came in way too high. So you will recall that, so anyway, we are, we, here I wrote, we're in the process of figuring out how to proceed. I'm gonna, I'm going to talk about where we're at on all these in the next segment just because I think it'll make more sense. The legislative allocation for water recycling, we are, have the engineer working on the feasibility study. And in the last meeting, we moved, we, you know, allowed them to kind of continue on that. So that's in progress. Hopefully do, hopefully we will hear at the end of September on that. We got the OEBET grab, we played it back. Let's see, we got that little water department grant to gauge our water in the intake. There's a little bit, there was a technical problem and we still are figuring that out. Okay, here's the other grants in progress or in project. Main Street got its grant to do the visitor center. That's in progress. I talked to Susan. She said the project's going to be completed this fall and winter. So that's like new roof, new windows, new door, all sorts of good stuff. So that's very exciting. We are the FEMA brick grant. I mentioned before that Oregon's attorney general filed suit with 20 states that also lost the congressionally appropriated funds. There was a preliminary injunction granted on that case, but I think that, you know, we don't know what's going to happen if we would ever get any money because we hadn't really gotten, been in the contractual phase yet. So we have pivoted to try to seeking other funds on that. The Melissa just mentioned, we got the planning grant for state for our Buffington Park. We applied for a forestry grant to pay for the culvert removal. But that grant program has now gotten delayed until spring. The governor pulled back on some of the state grants. And so that challenged our schedule. It didn't sound. We also applied for a private foundation grant of 218,000 to help us with that culvert. And we found out we did not get that in part because of all the uncertainty related to that project. So we put a lot of work into that and especially Erin Minster put a lot into trying to get that grant for us. So, and then Melissa mentioned, we applied for and did not get the small roads grant. So anyway, that's, and there's this other section about the additional private foundation grants. Our community center and American Legion Hall fundraising group is working on fundraising for that project now, moving on to the American Legion Hall. So that's all happening. So that's kind of a brief overview of all the grants that we have going. And so as Melissa and I have always said before, we've got a lot of things in the hopper because the writing of the grant is not the hard part. It's the management on the backend. And that's something that takes a lot of time for Dina and Melissa and for me just because of all the, you just kind of can't imagine the bazillions of little details that have to go into every one of these. But anyway, does anybody have any questions or? Okay. So the next thing that we have is we have the community building. Want to put that up? Okay, so I just recently got invited to give a presentation to the Rotary about the community building. And I thought, gee whiz, I should show you guys this because it's really fun to see what's going on in that building if you haven't seen it. And why should the Rotarians get to see all the photos and not the city council? So I'm just going to bang through this presentation. Okay. Double click on the first, just double click on the first slide. And I, do I press this thing just down here?
Yeah, go ahead and press it.
There we go, okay. So there, as you recall, is the diagram, the picture. Here's just a project timeline, just to remind you of how long this thing has been in the hopper. You will recall earlier this year, we put the projects out to bid. They came in way too high. So we had to shift to focusing just on the community building and funk, and put all funds towards that. And it's on target to be completed in mid-November to mid-December. So it's pretty exciting. And we'll be working on the Legion Hall as a second addition. So here's, just to give you a view, here's the first day of the project, if you recall, it looked like. Here's inside, early on, they were, had to take out all the interior and they found just all sorts of problems. And this is some of the wood that is so riddled with powder post beetles. Those, those were, it actually felt like picking up styrofoam. And these were part of the structural members of the community building. And fortunately, they're steel too, but this was like the, also part of the scaffolding.
Very common in this area.
Yeah. There's the new state platform, Precinium. That's a long time ago. And there it is more recently, a couple of weeks ago. I have to say, walking into it just feels really uplifting and exciting. So the, the main upgrades are this front plaza space that's ADA accessible.
So this, I was looking at this yesterday, I walked over there. It's all crushed rock, is that going to be?
It's going to be paved.
Oh, it'll be paved, yeah.
And then there's a concern, is there some utilities in the crushed rock?
Not in the, I don't think in the crushed rock, but in the walls, there are lights, light box.
It's not, I'm not an engineer, but I know that crushed rock and, and utilities and plastic pipe don't really use-
Oh, you mean the, the-
The water meter that you're looking at.
Going out or what is that? I mean, I saw, I don't know, I, I guess, looks like everyone knows what's going on better than I do, but-
Yeah, but there was some significant question about where initially they thought the sewer could connect on the front line, ended up having to go around the back. There's all sorts of things that have been muddled out. That's our architect and the superintendent of the project, Scott Knowles, who's been there on site doing great jobs. There you can see the platform and plaza. And that's what it looks like. Again, this is from a couple of weeks ago. It's farther along now. The other big thing is we're going to be connecting the buildings. So this is from a while back when they first started framing it out. And then now it's framed in and there you can see kind of, we have to, we're configuring out how to do the connection between the buildings. There's one of the big storage spaces that is now created between the two buildings. This is the view from the community building in through to the Legion Hall. And there's going to be bathrooms in that space. So it's, and there's a, a, a door that's going to be kind of from the back of the community building out to a new space out back or a space that I think is going to be more usable. So that's kind of cool.
Like a little picnic area about, about, yeah.
Or if people had to do events where you wanted an outdoor component. We're also going to be putting on new siding, new windows and a new roof. So that's in progress. Here it's the siding that had to be peeled off. This stuff, when we were inside the building, like after they took the inside of the building out, I mean, it looked like a bazillion little holes. It was just shocking. I kind of was, kept thinking about, you know, the story of the wolf blowing down a house. Like, oh my gosh. But there they had to frame it in. There's the framing in of the front. And that's farther along. And of course, we're doing, they're doing an updated interior and stage space and heating so there won't be that noisy heating unit. And so you can see how great it's looking. There's going to be an-
Insulate the roof?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're going to insulate the-
Yes, so, right.
Metal kind of insulation attached to it now. That's what they're using.
Metal has insulation attached to it?
Yeah, that's what everybody's using now. About an inch and, I'm going to say an inch and a half thick almost.
That's dense.
This is, um, the stage is going to be ADA accessible also. You can see that ramp. And this is just like Melissa and I have been going to these meetings every couple of weeks with the builder and the architect. And we've got these great community volunteers who have actual experience in this kind of thing that have been super helpful to us, Bob Fucy and John Johnston. And anyway, that's the carpentry contractor, the electrician contractor. And so now the, that crew of volunteers is working on developing a more realistic cost estimate for the American Legion Hall. Basically, that started out as a kitchen remodel, just upgrading the appliances and stuff. But then once we ripped off the siding, we realized, and the front, there's like no foundation on that whole part of the building. And so, you know, the front door was like balanced on this little pier. And so it's part of that new front work, they're putting a foundation on the front of the building. But we also, there's a lot of rot around the American Legion Hall. So basically, we realized there needs to be a more significant renovation of that building too. So that committee is working on current cost estimates and is going out to do fundraising on that. One of the big funders who was going to help us initially with the complex had pledged a quarter of a million dollars to help with the American Legion Hall. They pulled that back temporarily because we were focusing on the community building. But they are pretty much said, if we can raise the rest of money for the Legion Hall, they will put it back in. So that's what Toby Porter is working on now. So there it is. And anyway, so that's, I just wanted to give you guys an update to know what's going on. It's sort of definitely, I think, a bright spot in our work because it's sort of fun to go over there and see that happening. And anyway, and my little joke is I hope we're going to have water running in the bathrooms.
Isn't that funny?
It's not really that funny, but you have to have some humor here. So now we're moving on to the water financing update. So I, I put in your packet sort of the water systems project status summary. And what happened was, you know, we, we've been trying to get all these projects done. And we had as our highest priorities the past couple of years has been getting the reservoir dredged. And then we got this culvert, failing culvert kind of came in from the side. And both of those projects have tremendous potential to, you know, get us sideways. I mean, if the culvert collapses and we pour sediment to the reservoir and just getting the reservoir dredged would make things much better for our water system, for our water treatment and everything. Unfortunately, as we've implied, we had these, those two high priority projects for this year. I was thinking we would be having them implemented and we could start looking ahead to the next things. But we pretty much failed flat on both of them. The reservoir dredging bid-
We didn't fail flat.
We didn't fail flat. Well, we, the collective, the collective, we did not succeed. So, I mean, I don't know. We tried, but we did not get to where we needed to get unfortunately, not for lack of trying. So with the reservoir dredging project, or with both of them, I'll just say with the culvert first, we got no bids and we got no funding. So our current plan with that, and that's based on consulting with the engineer and our project manager, Erin, is to limp that culvert through the winter. We're going, the plan is to cut down the rest of the trees, cover up, cover it up with plastic. There are some parts of the metal inside that are sticking up. Kind of try to stabilize that or cut those pieces off and just monitor it very closely all winter. That's, it's getting to be late in the season right now. And we think that that may have been part of why we didn't get any bids. Because if it rains in, while the project's in progress, that could be risky. So- So that's the plan for now. And we can talk about potential other plans in a second. I'm going to try to tie it to the dredging. So the dredging project, we got one bid that was very, very high. It was like more than twice of what we expected. And the, the cost estimate was based on the engineer actually talking to this same company, it was Billiter. But when they came onto the site visit, and they'd been there before, but when they came, they realized that there were a lot of constraints at the site. They have a really large machine, and our space is actually quite small. So that their machine can kind of, has a gigantic arm that can go out into the middle, but anyway. They can't fit into the back of the reservoir. So we had discussions with our engineer and with our funding agency, which is Business Oregon on this, and obviously with Public Works Director, John Isador. And the thought was that, well, we ask the, we asked Billiter to come back with a lower estimate, like to, you know, as Tim said, sharpen the pen, to see if they could do something. And they came back and said, came up with a cheaper estimate, still outside of what we could afford, but it was like not to really do the job. So John's thought is that the mobilization cost is so high, especially because part of this is also setting up an alternative water source, that we really should just not do it this year and put out the bids earlier next year, do more recruitment of potential source companies, and to kind of do it once and right. So I'll just say, Monday, I was, or last Friday, I was hoping that both of these projects were moving forward. Now, it seems like we are in a holding pattern on them both. And so we kind of have to.
Spring, we're thinking.
Spring, first thing in the spring.
Can I ask what Billiter's bid was? Wasn't it 285 or something?
The, the actual, the second one or the first one?
Well, you said it was double what, what we had planned.
Yeah, let me see if I can pull it up here.
Double the 225K or double the?
No, it was the, wait a second, let me find it here. The 225K had two components to it. It had on it both, their initial bid for dredging was 274,000. But we also have the cost estimate for the alternate water, which is about 150,000. So that.
225 doesn't cut it.
Yeah. So we were really, we were over a barrel. They came back with a cost estimate of 139,000, Billiter.
But reducing the.
But reducing the area that they could do. And John just felt like, you know, we can't go to all of this effort of doing this and not get there. I mean, Melissa and I, I think we're both surprised that he would prefer to do that than, and limp through the winter with, but.
Just mobilization costs of that, that packaged water plant to bring in and to do all of that, that is such a huge lift, and that's such a huge capital outlay, that, that having it kind of one and done is, is.
And I, I don't even remember if that included the electrical cost, because at some point, we realized that like the cost for the pump for that also may have required some additional, like upgrading of our water treatment plant electrical system. So.
They had to put a drop down closer to the lake.
So that's my question. My question is, is projects very expensive, wouldn't we be better off looking for used dredge, much like the dredge that we had, that the city crew kept that thing?
Talked about that.
Cleaned up?
There's different issues. You can't stay in the pond, so it's got to be taken out.
Yeah, like.
That's a simple winch system to winch it out, but.
No, the, it's what we have to do with the dredge spoils, which is, we have the permit to take out 2200, and so we can't, where are we going to put it?
Okay, so, but that's the beauty of, so, once we dredge this, let's just say we dredge it right.
Yeah.
That's not the end of this silt problem.
I know.
The silt problem goes on forever.
Right.
Okay? So we need to have a device that we can work with as a city on a regular basis, or we're going to be faced with all this stuff year after year after year after year.
Agreed. We have to, we have to come up with a better plan, and I'm kind of bummed out that we, that this is so expensive, and that, I agree with you, we need to, like, then we have to put into our equipment budget to get one of those dredges. And I've been looking at them online myself and thinking we definitely need one. But I don't, I, I like the idea, we talked about it at the, at the one stop, after the one stop with our engineers, could we put the money towards one of these dredges ourselves? But the whole thing about how much material has to be brought down to somewhere else is the problem.
We hire a trucking company to truck it, just like, so the guy that's going to bid on this, he doesn't probably have trucks, he's going to hire local truckers to truck that stuff wherever we've decided it goes. I believe it's the City Yard, I still don't know about that, but anyway.
That's the plan.
I, I get it, and I'm not going to argue that, but I think we need to be in line to better do this year after year after year. When we're talking this kind of money, I think we can get a dredge. We just have to figure out how to pay, how to get the material from the dredge to the trucks to wherever it goes. I don't know. I know there's some places that it can go.
The dredge, it looks like John said the cost estimates, and I looked online, are about $300,000 for a dredge. So if you would like to try to do, do an alternative, on, on, well, or an alternative plan, here's the deal. We, we have the money, but this is the deal, when you are getting state money from Business Oregon, you kind of have to have a plan that's signed off on by an engineer. So that's where, we could propose an alternative and run it through the engineer and get it signed off, but I guess what I'm saying is, if we want to get the money to pay for it, it's, that's, that's what we're always up against.
Totally understand. So we dredged for years, and then we didn't dredge for about 10 years.
Right.
So, but, but they went out there and dredged that thing year after year after year, and we didn't seem to have the turbidity problems that we have now. So I got to believe that system was working. Yes, it was great that we could put the spoils in those ponds, still don't understand why.
Well, I think we need to go back and, I, I'd like to go back and have a conversation with that regulatory agency directly and not through the engineer, because I just feel like we have to, I just feel like I have to go and make the case.
Is that DEQ or is it Dogon?
It sounds like, I had, we got some friends at DEQ through the land deal, and so I asked her who to talk to, and she found out that it's actually Army Corps of Engineers.
Okay.
So I would like to go and have that conversation, because we do have to think of it not as a one-off. I agree with you entirely.
Okay.
But to do this first job.
I understand.
It's kind of like, and this is, I mean, I agree, I don't like this idea of putting, where we're putting the water on the, on the shop or the dredge, but we were told that if we didn't put it on a place that the city owned, it would be a bigger permitting issue.
Okay.
And so that was going to take more time. So if there are alternative ideas that can work, this is a totally imperfect solution, but it's the one that our engineer pulled together for us, so.
Well, it's easier to put it on site, there's no doubt about it, but.
Absolutely.
For some reason, we're not able to do it. We've done it for years and years and years, so.
I think we were doing it a little bit at a time though, and now we have a big buildup, so.
Well, and we may have to take the big buildup out, but beyond that, we have to have Plan B to take care of that year after year after year after year, or we end up in the same.
And we're going to be, and we're going to have trouble, because the permit we have is only in the summer. And so I, that's why I think we have to go and have a conversation.
Okay.
Anyway, I'd like to have that conversation. Yes, Joseph, did you have a question? Thank you. I would entertain a motion to extend the meeting.
So move.
All in favor?
Yes.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the ayes have it.
Wait a minute.
Well, I didn't hear anybody opposed.
You did that quick, I liked it. That's a good way to make it where there's no opposition, right Brad?
You gotta be, you gotta be fast thinking here to keep up with it.
We'll get it next time.
Take a five-minute break?
Yes, I, let's take a five-minute break by consensus, thank you for making that.
Okay. Are we back on?
We're back on.
Okay. Excellent. So, we're starting up again here at actually 7:40. And so to continue on this conversation about the water, so we went into this, we, we went into this mini one-stop with those priorities in mind, like thinking they would have already happened. And I was literally thinking we would be working on that pivot for the big water lines, you know, because for the BRIC grant, we had invested in significant engineering. So we've got shovel-ready projects and it's kind of a stranded investment until we make good on it. So that's what the mini one-stop was about. But then it turned out, the dredging and the culvert are sort of still on the docket. And within the past three-plus weeks, we've had this water filtration system problem, like jump leap to the top of the pile. So, so you'll see in this that those are now our top three priorities in this order, the water plant filtration, the dredging and the culvert removal. And so the water filtration system, so we, we had this meeting on Monday with Business Oregon. It was a mini one-stop, so it was just the Business Oregon people with us. Counselor Burns joined us. It came about because we were talking to the regional solutions person, Jessica, and our Business Oregon guy, Christopher Frazier, and they said, "We need to come and talk to you. They see us looking for grants." And I think their gist was sort of like, maybe we need to get you guys on track to maybe have a better plan. Because they see us throwing lots of balls up in the air. And sometimes you don't get grants and it might be better, for example, for us to try to take out a loan instead of just going for grants that we don't succeed at. So, we had a conversation with them about some of the funding options. It was kind of frustrating because it was all these people just saying, "Oh, well, there's this pot of money and there's that pot of money." But it seemed like almost none of them actually would fit for us. So it was sort of crazy or disappointing. But the two things that they did mention, to speak to your point, Brett, about lining up a line of credit, we didn't really talk about it in that language. But we learned that there is an infrastructure loan program whereby you could get money right away, but it's a 5% interest rate. It's pretty high.
A little more than that. It was five-point something.
Oh, was it?
It was, it was five-point. Yesterday.
Yeah.
That's helpful. I mean, just get a trend for a while.
Right.
I guess.
And then the other fund that I would be really hopeful that we could get instead is what we got for the dredging, which is that there's the, the water wastewater fund, which is basically, they could give us a partial grant, partial loan. So for the dredging, we got half grant, half loan, and that's a 1% rate. So ideally for this, I'm hoping for this water filtration project, we could get into that lane. So Civil West, so when, when this project was estimated, I got this wrong. I think that this, this summary that came out to you is a little bit incorrect. It was before I made a correction. There is not, I, I said there, the cost is 600 for the filtration system. That's wrong. Their estimate is 1.2 million for the filtration and air scour system that was recommended in our Water Master Plan. The cost 10 years ago was about 700,000. Now it's 1.2. So the conversation we had was this concept that maybe if we could keep it on the maintenance side, it would be cheaper and we wouldn't have to use an engineer to do the work and maybe that could go faster. But then I found out from talking to Business Oregon that if we go that route, we would not qualify for that funding because they don't want to just like give you a loan to do some Band-Aid that in two years is going to pop open again. They want you to, they're going to give you a loan and financing. They want you to like fix it and upgrade it. So that's now our highest priority. When John gets back, which I guess he's back, I've reached out to the engineer and said, "We've got to prioritize getting this in line and need to work with John to get the cost estimates." He's been having trouble getting cost estimates.
What happened with the filtration?
It sounds like the medium, which is what the water goes through, has gotten pretty gummed up. Like it's been in there. Yeah. It's been there for how long?
I mean, it's, it's, it's the original, it's the original from like 1976. And the issue has become that there's two of them. There's Filter 1, Filter 2, and they have a, in the bottom of this thing, it's a pipe and then it has some manifolds off the sides with, with holes in it and these pipes that have holes in them to, to push water through. And our biggest issue is, it's a water-based system. So when they flip those switches, what it's supposed to do is to pull already-treated water. So it's already poured the electricity and the chemicals and everything into it. Pull, it draws some of that water back and then pushes it through those manifold systems in the bottom of these filters. And then that water is supposed to fluff up and go through all these different layers. So the bottom layers are heavier gravels and by the time you get to the top, it's more fine sand. So it's just like a sand filter with these multiple layers, seven. Well, when, what's happened is the, the manifold, the pipes on the edges are plastic. And so they've broken or they've had something go wrong with them. And so you have big pockets where it doesn't distribute the, the water out to make it all fluff up and, you know, kind of wash the sediments and things out of it. It just blurps up big pieces of water. And so you have these like boils that come up through it. So they know something's wrong with those, with those manifolds in the bottom. But until you take out all those seven layers of things out of those two filters, you can't fix it. You can't change it. You can't do it.
You don't even know really.
You don't know for sure what's happening, but they feel that that's what's happening. So that's what they see at the top.
And that's what the, the technical assistant guy said, "You really have to replace this. The medium is already too old." And the consequence of that, too, is that they have to backwash the filters all the time. So.
That's the pushing water up through it. That's what they mean when they backwash. Exactly. So when they pull that already-treated water back to do that, it just has to flow out with all the now dirt in it and sediment in it and it goes out into the pond.
After we've treated it.
After we've treated it.
For everything.
But that's, that's where we lose all that treated water, is to, to clean out the filters. And it used to be, they could run four or five days on filters. Now we're talking four or five hours of runtime that they have to do it. So.
This is why they're having to work 24 hours.
All the time.
Because it's not filtering efficiently. So anyway.
Certain that it's PVC down below?
That was what the, that was what the plans, the original plans showed, like a stainless main pipe down the middle of it. But then it has these arms that go off of it. And yeah, they're plastic.
And then the plastic from back then.
Right. And it's.
That's a whole different technology of plastic from the 70s.
So anyway, we're. Yeah. And so that's where.
The white things are probably full of stuff.
Yeah, most likely, yeah.
You know, you got a hole that goes out. Well, it's not a one-way hole.
And one of the things that.
Actually on the bottom, they're on the bottom of the pipes that they shoot down. It's not falling into there, but yes, still.
The last, the last Water Master Plan recommended that we shift to an air scour system. So we didn't have to use water to, that would save us water, would be efficient. It's, it's more expensive. But I think those are the things we need to, we need to really hone in on move on this as soon as possible. And hopefully, we can get into the lane for that one source of funding. And if not, we might be in the position of having to do the 5% project.
So there's how many methods of that? So there's, there's ultraviolet light or whatever that's all, we use that?
Not there.
We use it in that, we use it as wastewater.
But I think that there's other, that you can use some of that stuff for this piece. I mean, you're not pulling solids out, but I just wonder if there aren't other things that.
Newer technology?
Yeah, you know?
That's kind of what I'm wondering, because the master plan's quite old. I wonder if there's any kind of just way to retrofit that to something different. Maybe the only choice is the air scour system.
Yeah. I think that is the new technology, is the air scour, but.
And what they do before it gets to that filter part, when he talks about the flock tank by putting chemicals in it, it draws out when the water comes in. And it's not too turbid, not too much sediment in it, right? Turbidity. Then it, these chemicals sort of adhere to those particles and then they fall to the bottom. And so once it starts doing that, they say that it's flocking. And then once it's flocking well, after they fill up this big tank, it then moves to the tubes. You hear, "I had to clean the tubes." Well, it's kind of a long, two of these tables were put together. It's kind of a long area that has tubes that run through there. And then it's almost like an egg crate-looking thing on the bottom. So all that just settles out. And then they have to clean that part, too. And then after that process is when it goes to these filters. So it has already been processed through the, the flock tank to get the bigger pieces of sediment. And then it continues to do so as it moves through there. Then it goes to the filter, then it goes out. And then that's, there's a pre-chlorine if it's needed, mostly for the color. And then there's the, the regular chlorine that gets put into it after that piece. So there are other things to do, but.
It's a lot of work, basically.
It's a lot of work and it's a lot of work. So anyway, we're, that's, that's what we're going to be working on as I would say a top priority for water. And then for the dredging and culvert, as I said, we're going to have to limp the culvert through the winter. And Erin has said, you know, if this S-Fish money comes through, if it does get kicked loose, we don't know. We can keep looking for funding for that. And for the reservoir dredging, Business Oregon has said if the bid comes in way high again next year, that we can, we can go back and ask them for more, but they would want to know the current bid. So she pretty much said, "Wait till you get the next bid next year." But we're really encouraged to do it early next year. And we've made it clear, I frankly was frustrated that the engineer, that we didn't get these bids out earlier. We really, I think, tried to get them out earlier. It was our intention, but.
So it's took a long time.
Experience now, too, with the process.
Yes. And all the things are written now, so we can just.
Pop it out.
And.
When can we, should we, should we get it back out there now?
Well, I think we are saying more like February is the time to do it.
Yeah.
Well, they can't start doing the work.
I understand that.
For, well, I'm talking about the reservoir dredging until, well, either of them, until July 15th because of in-streamed work season.
You know how long it takes to get bidding in and go through that process?
Yes, we do.
I don't know.
Well, I think we were thinking about the beginning of the new year. If you think otherwise, I will entertain that question with our engineer.
Idea, too, and see if there's any way to.
Well, I'm just concerned, we may put it out to bid and get no bids, or we may have to put it out to bid again. Do you see what I'm saying? There's going to be, if we don't get bids, we still have to continue to go out to bid until someday we find somebody to do it.
Yep.
If not, I don't know how we get it fixed. That's my only concern.
With our own dredge. I mean, that's still. I like the buy a dredge thing, you know? I mean, to your point, previous councils were never in this position. And it was because we had our own dredge.
Yeah.
And then it broke down and how it, you know, I was a member of a different class of council and, and it just, we had other stuff going on, I guess, and it slipped, slipped through our fingers. But being able to do your own work when you have the opportunity to do it, there's two weeks in the summer, you know? You could imagine that, 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 I think that's National Fisheries or NOAA that controls that.
Well, it's ODFW.
ODFW.
So there's a few, right, and I think they work with, anyway.
Yes.
People up and down the West Coast are all shooting for the same two-week period, which is going to elevate the expense and just astronomically, and, and even as we could afford more, someone else could afford more. And so I think that sort of speaks to the, the significance of pursuing. This grant won't cover it, I don't think.
Well, but the thing is, if we have a proposal, we can go back and get more money if it's a credible proposal.
So I, I think something, oftentimes granters will grant for projects, but not for equipment.
You're right. Yeah, absolutely.
That's what I might, you know, it would be a different, perhaps a different.
Yeah. And what we were just talking about, too, is I think there is some equipment, there is some equipment grant. I don't remember where it is now. I gotta keep an eye out for that. But I think Marlin mentioned that with like an OHA equipment grant. But we could also, we have an equipment fund. And so now that we've got the VACON truck done, you know, maybe that's the next thing is we work on a dredge.
That, that, that's, that old VACON might be a great tank to haul the crap down the hill and put it in the yard, too. Just an idea, but.
Well, I wondered at some point if we could use the VACON as part of it because.
I talked to a gentleman that did a job in California and they used the VACON to clean out same kind of waterway we have, but it was more of a river-type water, waterway. But they use.
Rock instead of.
They borrowed trucks from multiple cities and they had those VACON trucks just running in a circle. And they cleaned it out that way. I could find out more about that, by the way.
Well, I think part of the, part of the issue that John Isador talks about with this is that we have a lot of sticks and logs and things in there. And so using things like that can cause, you know, they, it just won't be able to do that very well.
Specific kind of dredge.
That's why our former dredge was so good. It had a beater bar on it. And, but there are, there are dredges that have those kinds of equipment on them. But.
You know, the core, the core dredges in Mississippi and, you know, a lot of these inland waterways that, that have to be dredged with something.
Well, they have mega, if you go online and start shopping for dredges, there are ma, well, you know, like massive dredges. We don't, we don't.
We have a small water supply.
Yards is, I mean, that is like half this room or something. I don't know about that, but.
Yeah. It's about.
Very much. It's about the size of the room. It's just not, you know, you don't need a giant machine to do that.
Well, we're going to be, we're going to be focusing on the filtration system right now. So it gives time. If you, if anybody wants to do research and come up with an alternative plan to bring, do it soon because we don't have to, I mean, it's got to come soon because it has to go, it would have to be vetted through the engineers and John and all manner of stuff. So if you feel like you have the chops to figure out an alternative, definitely go for it, you know?
Run in, the water's.
Well, we, we do know, I mean, this is a good plan, but we do know for future, we, we need to probably be able to maintain our own.
Yes.
That's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
I'm not saying this is a bad plan. I'm just saying that I'm thinking into the future, beyond this.
Yep. Okay.
I don't want to be in this problem again.
No, we don't. It's this, I mean, if we can, this is why this had been the highest priority to get this done for several years.
Correct.
It's two-pronged. I think it's this now and then forward-thinking. I think that's the plan is to.
So.
Big piece and then move.
Yeah. So moving on, in this thing I put in the packet, I said, "I think this one ended up being a little bit of like, there was a later version of this, this, I'll just say, I mentioned the water, raw water tank project is kind of moving on." Oh, okay. Yeah. Maybe this is the one, it's more, I'll just mention the, so the break-prone pipelines and water meter replacements, so that now has to be put off a bit. But I think that is still in our future to try to line up some funding. I think the things, some of the questions I'm trying to answer is how much debt can we take on without going to the voters? I think from what I have figured out from ORS, we can possibly, we can probably take on about up to $9 million of debt and, and do it with the full faith and credit of our finances, I think. I'm not 100% sure, but that's what the ORS says. I asked the auditor and it's a question we have to have our financed, financial person help us with. But Ian didn't really understand that either. So we need to sort.
Market value.
Sort that out. It's based on 3% of the real market value of our properties. That's what that number comes from. Yeah. So anyway, so that's on the back burner now, but something we can work on. And along those lines, we had put in this SIP grant application to do leak studies to help us get the data to apply for grants to fix those lines. So one of the things we talked about in that infrastructure finance meeting is sort of this way of thinking about these projects moving forward. In my mayor's report, I talked about, there's another group, Willamette Partnership, that has offered to help us with some infrastructure planning. When I first talked to them, I thought, oh my gosh, here's like another group that's, has money to do things, but is going to like kind of take up more space than really help us, you know? Because it seems like there's always money to do engineering and planning and to help little communities. But it's kind of like there's no money to actually do what we need to do. So my first take was like, oh, give me a break. But I had some conversations with people at Business Oregon and they thought that this group could really possibly be helpful to us. So they also observed at our one-stop and I'm going to follow up with conversations to do kind of the, the funding plan for us. So because, for example, we ended up getting, you know, taking on this water tank plant project. So because, for example, we ended up getting, you know, taking on this water tank plant, project. But that means we can't do another project with that funding source for like five more years or something. And so there's things we have to be thinking about strategically that we haven't been thinking about because turnover of staff and such. So anyway.
We would want to take a $12,000 grant and eliminate our potential for a $500,000 grant.
Exactly. So.
Smart. I like that.
We need, we need kind of a little bit more help on that front. I mean, we've been doing, we've been working hard and doing our best and trying to get, and the good part about that group is they are free. They have grant funding, so they could help us. Anyway, the other things in the packet, we talked about that Lake Shore sewer situation. It seems like it was a major crisis, but John has it under control and we mentioned about the water facility.
Still looming.
Oh, yeah. It's probably looming and he knows he has to put it in the pipeline and start getting permitting and working on that's going to be a piece of equipment we're going to have to replace. So, oh, that's the end of that, that discussion. And so it's pretty important and heavy stuff because supplying drinking water, clean drinking water to our community is, I think, one of the most important things we do as a city. It's the foundation of all of our wellbeing of us all and our economy. And it's just kind of the fundamental thing. So there you have it.
So I have a question.
Yes.
So I see a lot of grants through agencies and departments and stuff like this. Do you guys seek any private funding from, from private grants?
Well, we did just, you know, at that time, we sought, tried to do private funding for this culvert project. So we sought 280,000 from them. And so we did, we did a, we had them, hosted them here. We did the application. We, we did that.
Took them up to show them and then had multiple follow-up times and questions and answers and.
Yeah, and they declined. And I think my take from that experience was that private foundations may not like to do things that they think the government should do.
They want to put their name on something that looks good.
That's, that's a good way of putting it also, you know? Like people are falling all over to help us pay for the community building.
Right.
But, you know, you want to put a pipe in the ground to carry some sewage. That's not what somebody wants to do, you know? That's like our job.
Valisis Pipeline. It's like, no one wants that. That's not, that's not, that's not.
I put my name to it. I just have to win the lottery.
So.
I'll do the sewer.
So that is, I mean, I don't think, I honestly think that private philanthropy, here's the thing. When we had that meeting too, they said, you guys aren't the only ones that are in this situation. It feels really bad to us, but communities everywhere have failing infrastructure. And it's a failure that larger areas of government, I mean, we have to do it in two ways. We have to pay our share. So as citizens, we have to recognize that we have to pay our share. And we also need external help because we can't afford it ourselves. So those two things have to come together. And unfortunately, right now, some of those funding sources are going away at a higher level. And so we're, we might have to rise to the challenge ourselves more locally or we'll see what's going to happen. Okay. So with that note, here is the agenda here. You have that right there.
Somewhere under all this stuff.
I know, all my paper. Okay, so finally, we get to this very important discussion, which is the council priorities discussion.
Valisis, I need to leave. I have a phone call coming in at 8:30, so I'll probably leave about five minutes before that.
Okay. Thank you for letting us know, Councilor Parks was, okay. So I will just start, start this and then I might turn it over to you a little bit, Melissa. So we, as a council, back in, I think it was February, came together and did this job of coming up with our priorities. We put it into this really great, Joseph helped put it into this great format, or Joseph and Melissa of organizing it by major.
You do not have that.
I just.
Here, you do not have it.
Then you, and I just add mine.
Oh, never mind. Okay, I think you should have it. You got, I think you just gave it to me.
I do, sorry. Sorry, Joseph.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So, so that was the, the thing. And I think there's two things, I mean, the first thing, we didn't get a chance to do this. Melissa and I went through this a little bit the other day. And I just want to point out that a lot of, we've actually, our staff has accomplished a lot of what is on this list already. And I'd love to, if we had had more time, go through and kind of, you know, color in the things that we've done already. And there's a lot of things that are done and in progress and all that. So I couldn't be more pleased to, to see that. And if we had more time, we could even go through and, but we're not going to do that just because we don't have time, but just want to bring that up. But the other thing that's going to come up, that has come up, and I've seen it because I, I don't, I wouldn't say I hang out at the office, but I'm down here working in and out a lot, is that one of the things that we realized about this list is this list is all like projects that we want to see done, but we don't really have on here like just running the city. And the work of just running the city actually takes quite a lot of time of, of the staff. And so what, what it means is that basically, in short, we're asking our staff to do quite a lot and it's, it can be overwhelming. And especially because we've been short on staff lately with our, without a finance person as much as we need. But anyway, so Melissa has asked for some guidance from us on what do we want them to, what do they, what do we want our staff to be focused on working on? So why don't I turn it over to you, Melissa, to maybe say it a little bit more articulately than I can at this point.
I was gonna say, yeah, I, I came to work at eight, so it, it might not be super articulate. But basically, not, this is a great list and what we came up with was all the stuff that needs to be done or that would be nice to have. Because earlier in the conversation, we heard, as we all do, that everyone drives around in the town and they see the thing that irritates them. And so everyone comes in with a peeve and a problem. And Counselor Webb's peeve and a problem are different than Counselor Rask's and they're different than Counselor Brennan's. And then every citizen has at least one peeve and at least one problem. And so that's what we usually get. So it becomes overwhelming to try and manage all of those for people. And, and my staff now, what we're working on is, is meeting people where they are. And if they have a concern or they have an issue, that they can come and they can be heard and that they can get what they need. We can't always give everyone exactly what they want, not Santa Claus. But we want to be there and be responsive and explain maybe why the answer is what it is. And so it, that's this changing culture of what happens here at the city. And so I just, to kind of bring it back, in administration specifically, because that's where we are, we basically have 150 hours of time per week that staff is, is working, is paid to work here. So, you know, with, with Marissa Clausen, she's doing a fabulous job. She's our new utilities clerk and she's, she's great. She's great. She asks really thoughtful questions. She is just, she's, she's got a sticky brain. She's very kind. She's very courteous to the customers. It's, it's really, she's, she was a great hire. But she is in charge of all the utility things, so working with Tyler, making sure the bills are correct, getting out the bills, manually entering the meter reads that come from the fellas out and about, answering the telephones, talking to anyone, you know, processing payments. If there's an adjustment that needs to be made, all of those things run through her. And so she's been learning really well and Dina Lang has been fabulous in, in training her. I've tried with the knowledge I have from stepping in to help her out. Joseph's been amazing trying to help and do that. Really good team. Okay, that, it's, it's great. However, she also then is responsible for court and what happens with all of that. So the citations and running the municipal court and making sure that everyone is clear on that. And when people call and I don't know how to pay my ticket, what do I need to do? And can I have traffic school? And I'm suspended and I need my ID. All these things, she has 40 hours to get all of that done. Including the other projects and business licenses and STRs when those come around and like all the things, right? Burn permits, pressure wash permits, all, all of it. So her 40 hours a week are full with that. And we have Dina Lang who has come in and she works about 30 hours a week. And she does payroll twice a month. She pays all the bills. She does all the accounts receivable. So all the checks and balances and internal controls that we heard about at the auditing, all of those things have to happen with her. And so Dina gets here and she is just nose down, trying to get everything taken care of and, and getting all this stuff done. So her 30 hours a week are full. And then part of the piece that Mayor Valisis mentioned is when we have all these grants and have all these things, we get all these invoices. We have to come up and get them dispersed. So if we're dealing with the architect and the engineer and the funder and the, and the intermediate group that's helping us with all of it. All of those emails and all of those things and all of those little teeny tiny details that the mayor has just picked up and helped run with. And that I, that's a big part of what I do too, is keep all of that going and that, those internal controls, she's full. And Joseph has to make sure that, as the recorder, that when the website goes down, he's having to get that figured out. He's calling the different groups. He's figuring it out. He has to make sure all the minutes are correct. He has to make sure all the packets for planning and for the historical committee, historical commission. And all the things are all done well. Oh, yeah. And then planning, which is another piece on top of that and ask, you know, answering questions and producing packets and what happens with this and figuring the setbacks and what can I do and what can I not do and all the things. And so he's pretty full up, right? So his 40 hours are full. So that leaves me here. And so overseeing that and doing what we have talked about, you know, the, the ABCs of getting us back to a functioning government and a functioning organization with things like training, making sure that we, all the evaluations are being done, that we're following what our collective bargaining agreements say. We're about ready to start collective bargaining in this next year. So all those things are starting to come up. The budget, the finance committee, the, making sure the audit and helping out with all of those things. And then when people don't get their answer and their problem or their peeve isn't solved with the police officers or with that staff, then that becomes my role. So I kind of think of it as, you know, a, a stream that's coming down. And these folks have their, their nets that they're standing in the water with and they have nets that are good size. They got a lot to do. But if they come up with a problem and it's too much, they can step aside and let that one go behind them. And then maybe Dina's the next one that'll kind of tackle it and see. But ultimately, I have the net that's across the bottom to collect those, you know, most snarly problems, right? Issues, crises, whatever happens. And so I, that fills up quite a bit of my time too. And so what I guess when I'm trying to bring forth is that a lot of that is just the basics of keeping this place going and what's happening in the ordering and the, all the things. And so there's not a whole lot of time left over for all the projects and all the, you know, the things that are happening there. And that is what a lot of these, what these things are. And so we have so many, so many ideas of the ways we want to improve our town and what we want to do. And that means that people care and that they want to be here and that they want to do that. And so that is awesome. What I need from you is kind of a list to say, what is our priority? Not all the things we want to get done and what can happen, but truly what is our priority? Because we can't, I can't do it all. So when we have the things that come in and you asked, you know, last, last meeting, like, can you handle this? Can you do it? And my gut reaction is because who I am and who the mayor is is like, yes, we can do it. We can handle it. We can take care of this. But as we think more about that, I really need council to set those priorities and to say, this, Melissa, is what I need you and your staff to really be taking on. These are the things in the future facing that, that we need and the priorities that we need. And so if you could think about it as each of you have 100 tokens. And so when you look at this list, you know, Counselor Rask might say, I want 20, I'm going to, you know, it's so important. I want 25 tokens to be on the community center and making sure that this town is ready for theater and that we have a beautiful place to meet and to do. And that's where 25 of mine go. I know John Isador, because we think about staff too, would put 100 of his coins on water infrastructure, right? He'd put all of them there. And each of us have those different things as staff and as council of where we think, if you only have 100 coins, 100 tokens to put on these things, what does that look like and where do those priorities land?
Water and police levy.
Okay.
50/50.
50/50, water and police levy. Okay?
Obviously, water is the most important thing.
Water is the most important thing. And then the police levy is probably our second most important thing currently we're, we have to deal with.
Waste treatment.
Well.
And the what? I'm sorry?
Waste, waste treatment.
Yeah.
Right.
I'm hoping the feasibility study will help somewhat with that. Do you see what I'm saying?
Right.
It will kind of fall in place.
So, so these are, these are the things that, and, and again, you have your answer right, right away.
That's my answer. I mean, I could probably go, you know, I'm just calling it 50/50 on that, water and police levy. Because the reason the police levy comes, rises up there so high is because we need to solve that problem.
Right. Absolutely.
So realistically, what can you and your staff do about water? I mean.
They've done so much in the past few months.
All the stuff.
All the stuff that we've been talking about, I have been in her back pocket, dealing with, doing all of those meetings, grants.
You know, Marissa and Dina, you know, but what can, what can they actually allocate towards that?
So what happens is like, so for example, we heard the other day at this, at this one stop, you need to do a rate study. Well, to do a rate study, we need our utility clerk to be able to like pull out all these reports and turn them in and blah, 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 blah. Or to do, to get information on water consumption, she has to be able to pull all these reports to do for the, for grant applications. Or to do a lot of the stuff that has to do with actually the grants, we need Dina to be keeping up on all of the pieces of, and, and reporting and making sure the money goes through. Just to pay off that loan that we did, I mean, I cannot tell you how many steps it took us to line up how to wire that money. You'd think that would be a no thing. It took us hours of Dina and me and Melissa and phone calls to different agencies, Department of Administrative Services. I mean, on and on. You just couldn't believe it. So those are the things that it is.
Or did that and it's like 75 bucks a month for everybody. It's cheap. And I wonder if freeing up some of Dina's time to do the things that you've just mentioned out of savings, that might be something that the, the council would might consider. What that looks like.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of any, anything that can take the load off our tiny staff like that.
Dollars per employee per year or something.
We, we did in the past outsource our minutes. I know, it didn't work super well, but I think it's because we had a communication issue with the.
Right, our system back then.
Here with our, we had horrible equipment. So all as I'm saying is it's something that could take a load off of.
Joseph.
Joseph.
What we have with Joseph is, I don't think a lot.
Yeah, it's just.
What we have now in-house, we can't see.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? T word trust, but there was a lot of problems.
We're, we've made a lot of amazing headway.
We've made.
But I'm looking at the outsourcing available might be something because Dina, she could tackle those other things.
Yeah. The thing, the thing though is that that's one of the things that Dina really likes. I mean, she was hired as the payroll clerk, you know? And so that, that is something that, that she is really good at and getting all those things done and, and taking care of that. I think we could look at some automation of things possibly and, and doing that. And, and that is where we're, we're struggling and I, again, have been exceedingly clear. We need that oversight by that actual finance person, you know, because that, that's not me and I told you that when I, when you hired me. But, and I can do some of it, but the really nuts and bolts of writing the reports and doing all those things, like I, I, that, you know, that, that's just not what I went to school for. That's a whole, it is, it's, that's the whole, that's the whole thing.
And there's a lot of times that we have questions that come up along those lines about procurement and about lots of different things. and about lots of different things that takes, it takes way more time because we have to figure it out where somebody who would know it would know it.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Unlike the TLT, it was really easy to pass that, but now to make that happen is going to be a lot of hours. It's not just a phone call.
Well, once we get those, get that information out, I think it's.
But getting that, somebody's going to have to be.
Well, yeah.
We're working on it.
We're working on it.
So, but to get back to this conversation, Melissa, I mean, you've, I feel like your metaphor is apt. And I see it also in like Public Works has the same little thing because they're working overtime. They've got like all the things they have to do to run the various plants and do the fixes and try to keep the lawns mowed here and there. And I mean.
And so things drop off, I guess, is the, is the thing. So in the priority of things, keeping water running in the pipes and making sure that we don't have, you know, dings, you know, violations and making sure that the health and safety of our population is taken care of and responding as quickly as we can to those things, those fellows are just running constantly. And, and so that's how they are, are doing the water. And again, it's, and then you have John Isador, who when, when we're talking about these grants and things, then he is the one who's calling out for these things and having to, you know, manage these things. We're trying to help and how to, how to do it and taking over a lot of those things too. And then of course, the police officers are the ones who are out actually maintaining the laws and the safety of the town, you know? And there's not a, a lot, you know, of extra there. So I, I think, and I will say that asking about the water, if there's a leak, citizens call here when we're open and then we have to figure out where it is. And then we are basically the dispatchers for our public works and then we're the ones calling citizens and, and making sure. And, you know, if there's an issue that happens, they come in. So, so a lot of what we do is, is already focused on the water and the, and the pieces. So I, I would agree that the, the, trying to, to, I really want to help not only get the projects done that we're doing, but then be able to have the forward thinking of whoever sits next in this seat or sits next in that seat or next in that seat, that they, we've, we've laid a good framework and a thoughtful framework for whoever that might be later on. And right now I feel like we're just sort of running from one thing to the other and we can't be thoughtful about it. One thing that I'm going to suggest is that we allow business licenses to go for a year and a half. And that instead of having those due at the fiscal year with the audit and with the budget and with all that, but maybe we have it at January. And so they're going to get them for a year and a half, right? Those, those sorts of things to be thoughtful, but I've had to be here for a while to, to look at that and say, oh, why are we doing it that way? Right? So, you know.
And are we getting enough from the two, two or three thousand dollars?
Oh yeah, you gotta go.
Are we getting enough money for the time it takes?
Right.
To do it.
Is the juice worth the squeeze on that?
Yeah.
We raised, we raised those fees.
We did.
And you guys need to remember, it's just a piece of paper.
Well, and I'm just saying, you know, do we even need to be doing?
Worth it. Is it worth that time?
Well, I don't know. You'd have to bring numbers for us to make that decision. Anyway, good, good talk.
Thanks, Tim.
Nope, no worries. Thanks, Tim.
I'll check in.
Yep, yep. I think.
But things like that could, you know, a little here, a little there, outsourcing this, not doing business licenses. You know, the more of that we can do, then the more time you'll have to do other things. You're doing that instead of things for probably a higher priority maybe.
Yeah. I mean, because like you think about the time that goes into, let's say, business licenses and we don't really know yet. We haven't seen the numbers on it, but.
There was, Dave Johnson did a breakdown of them years ago that really nailed it. Because there was, been a few different structures of it. And, and it was if you did this, it would be this. And then you can probably find it in one of the packets. I don't know. That's a lot of work to dig through one of those, I guess, maybe. But he did do a really comprehensive look at, you know, what, what if they were all ten dollars? What if they were? Because we set them up to be different tiers years ago.
And there's two tiers now.
It used to be like five tiers.
Oh, you know.
And there was like a ten dollar one for anybody that made less than ten thousand. And then it went all the way up to like five hundred dollars because Chevron doesn't necessarily need to pay the same as mom over here making.
Right, right. But, but the question is, is it even worth it? Because in the end, do we get five thousand dollars and it's all this effort or? And that's about, and I, and I think it is, you know, compared to like trying, putting in the time to get the grant. That's like the million dollars that we really need, you know?
Or to figure the TLT out or.
Yeah, right.
That we, you might gain more from.
So there's some value in them. I think we would want to have them because something like the short-term rentals, you want to be able to see that to, to get that, okay, well, these people have licenses and, and they should get first dibs. You know what I mean? You can look back at what's going on there and that's helpful, but.
Yeah. And that's a specific idea that may or may not be valuable.
No, no, but I'm just saying there's, you know, there, there's reasons sometimes I didn't like the, I have had a problem with the business license because you didn't get anything for it.
Right.
The city didn't really get anything and it cost us time and the purchaser didn't really get anything.
Yeah.
And.
The value might be to just register or whatever.
Exactly. And I would suggest that that's kind of where we're at, that it would probably be better just even if we needed a list to have a list. But the, the funds that we're getting from that is not, I don't believe.
No, and I think that that's why we in the past had bumped up those costs where and, and kept the low parts low for the guy that can't afford it, you know, if you only make ten grand, you know, then that was the thing. It was like they were all fifty bucks or something at one point. And it was like, well, a guy that makes a couple thousand dollars, he's not going to go get a permit if it's fifty bucks. It's just, you know, we need to cut him some slack. But why would, you know, a large, a corporate entity pay the same, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
Anyway, I'm sorry.
Well, but the thing is, I mean, Melissa, I think this brings up a really good thing, which is that you have now been in your position for about a year and a half. And so you are now in a position to start making recommendations to us to see. I mean, we, we did give priorities that maybe it's not really priorities. It is a wish list. But, but I do think we excluded some things, believe it or not, when we made this. We tried. We were starting as a new council to pull things together. Some of us who were on council before were trying to rebuild and solve some really serious problems. And having a, having a to-do list or a list to begin with is the starting point to solving things. So I think, for example, we could, in all your spare time, have you make some recommendations to us on what comes off this list or how the, maybe this gets rearranged so that there's a, the top, there's a top tier in every one of these lists. Or maybe we need to add to this, just like the awareness that running the city, ABCs, running the city well, which includes the fiscal responsibility, I mean, is sort of the, it's the first thing. And then that these other things we, we may have to have a more measured pace on tackling because we have so many crises that come in the door. I mean.
I think also, you know, that, I know I can certainly appreciate everything you're saying, but there, I'm sure there are specific tasks that could be passed on to somebody or something done with, but we don't know what they are. So you're, you're the inside job, you know? So yeah, if you can, if you can be more specific with some tasks.
And be maybe thinking of that as somewhere in your priorities, every time you go, whoa, you know, this is something that maybe we could outsource or we could quit doing or to give you more time for other pri, you know, then all of a sudden those are done and now our priorities.
We can move it up on the list.
Yeah.
We have a strategic plan, right? Do we not have a strategic?
No, this is, this is our strategic plan.
We don't have a strategic plan.
No.
Have you made a strategic plan?
Have I ever made one before?
For the city?
Have you made one for the city?
We had one for the city. There's the facility master plan and then a strategic business plan.
Well, we have, we have a water master plan. We have a wastewater plan. They're out of date, but those are things that we are, those are where these priority lists come from and I've.
And that's the joy of the plan is that what you do should comp, should.
I passed up my little cartoon of water. That's, those are from those two master plans plus adding in the stuff that's up to date.
Strategic plan, like we don't have.
We don't. So this is our attempt at a strategic plan.
Usually they're just so much larger, you know what I mean? It's a huge look. It's down the road.
Yeah.
And then all of your little things that you do are to that end and it kind of makes.
Our pieces of.
Yeah, you know.
We just have so many things that we have to do right now. We can't think down.
Can't think straight, but we're, I mean, I think we're trying. We are trying. And the whole water infrastructure conversation is very much trying to be looked down.
Strategic.
But we are having to solve like, or whatever, put out brush fires even as we're trying to come up with solutions that aren't just the quick and dirty solution, but are like the long-term solution, you know? So I guess this is just to plant a seed, like to, to, to think about those things. Because also outsourcing, that costs money, right? To like outsource what you're, what we're doing so that we're kind of outsourcing our finance director position right now. We don't necessarily have the funds to hire that person full-time. I mean, that could, that could help. But doing all those outsource things, those, those add up, they cost money.
It's supposed to be, each one of those is supposed to be a wise decision, right? If you can't outsource it cheaper than you can do it in-house, then you, no, or, but we're not just blanket outsourcing. We're, right?
Right. We don't, yeah, we don't do a whole lot of that, but we, we have, I mean, we outsource for a lawyer, two lawyers. We outsource for engineering. We outsource for the sign-off for collections for wastewater. We sign, we outsource for, I mean, we, we. He has level twos and you have to have level threes in order to be the ultimate sign-off, sign-off. And so we have Bob Dillard who does that. So we, which all small municipalities, that's what they do because you don't have that level of skill to do that. We outsource for, you know, electricians if we have something that goes, we're.
We're outsourced for grant administration.
Some of it.
CCD with some of it.
Some of it. So we, we are outsourcing quite a number of things for that reason that you're talking about to, to try and do that. So, you know, but there are some things in-house. We used to outsource the management of the website. But now Joseph very much has those skills and has the ownership to do it. And that's been something that he has taken over in this last year. There's snafus in it, right? Something doesn't talk correctly to the other thing.
Recall, we never had the, we never, I mean, we did have the packet was a problem this week, but it used to never, we had a period when it was never, was never out on a Friday and it was such a struggle and we finally.
Become the norm now, but we were preparing for that one stop on Monday, which is what we decided took priority over making sure everything, you know.
Well, and the website was down too.
Website was down with, you know.
An extra level of.
Right, so.
Well, we've done a, a lot of really great things that we may not even show. It's like that pipe in the ground, you know?
Right, exactly. Yeah. We replaced the pipe. Yeah.
And I think I, that's what I was kind of alluding to. It's not at the, with the ERPD is I'm not against our affluent going out there. It's just what's it going to take to get it to happen? Because, because our staff is going to not do something that they're doing now to do that and.
They were supposed to pay, you know, when this whole thing started, I was here. And they were supposed to pay for everything. You know, if we were talking, if she was talking about this right now, it'd be billing them. That was, I mean.
And that's got to be in our MOU and that's, and that's what I kind of missed at that meeting. If we hadn't passed the redo, then it would have just taken more time. And I see that now, but, but that's got to be in that MOU, that everything has got to be taken into account so that we're not hurting ourselves by their gain.
And it's not a function of normal government selling your dirty water to somebody, you know, it's not like a.
It's not one of our top priorities.
Expect a government from that, you know, you expect water and protection, you know, other than that.
Well, and when you look at my little cartoon and you just see all the stuff that we have going, it's kind of like, it just shows you like, oh my gosh, we, these are all the things we're working on and, and like part of it there at the end is like, well, you know, it just shows you there's a lot that we have as priorities. So anyway.
So I guess all that to say, just to be thinking of that and I can bring some more things forward. However, I, I just, to reiterate, I'm really, really proud of the people that we have on this staff and in this crew to work. Like it's, they have gotten so much work done and are just amazing, amazing. And I just appreciate that. I just, which means I need to go to bat for all of our people too.
That includes you too.
It certainly does.
I'm aware. Trust.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Your recognition.
But. But, but it's, it's, it's a, it has been a, a, a big push and trying to learn all of the things. I mean, we've, we've had a really, really good team and so I appreciate their efforts.
Come a long way.
I know. Who knew I can talk stem walls and, you know, insulation of things and lift stations versus pump stations versus flocking versus, so yeah, it's all, it's, it's, there's a lot, there's a lot of things. So.
And this is something we could maybe discuss more often, you know, give it at the end of each meeting to, to come back to this.
Maybe not each meeting, but I think definitely coming around. And so this was just to, to really give a, give kind of an update because we do have the things that we have accomplished and you look through that list now and, and we have accomplished a lot of things. And there's things that look like an easy fix, but then it's not and things that we want to get done. So that it's, we're still moving forward. It's just, I, I, I just need from you folks kind of those big picture items so that if there are things that come in, that I'm able to say, I'm sorry, that, that isn't on our priority list. If you want it moved up, you're going to need to come talk to council. And, and I need counselors also who are willing to step in and to help and to do those things to say, you know, because the mayor's running around doing all these things. I mean, we're, I mean, seriously working hand in glove trying to get all this stuff done. So if there's things that can be picked up and, and to help with that, that's the ask as well. Because there are a lot of things that need to be done that you guys have visions for and our citizens have visions for and.
And there's also, we need, we need to support you in, in, in not saying yes to everything. We have to be able to say on some of these things that might come up like, yeah, that's a great idea. And we need to wait till we get through some of these projects. And, you know, I'm the worst at that because I like want to get everything done yesterday. I like to turn a dial. But that's what we, to, to make sure that we don't run, I mean, our people are, are working really hard and so, anyway. But Melissa, I appreciate you bringing this, you know, helping us to understand this. I, I love that we accomplished a lot. I think our list is still a great starting point and we can refine it. And, and you can bring us ideas and other staff can bring us ideas too. Because I think everybody knows, you know, their piece of the elephant best.
Right.
And so we encourage you to do that. And thank you very much for all that you're doing.
Entertaining the notion, the discussion. Appreciate that.
Okay. So thank you everyone for that. And we have one more, I believe we have one more item on the agenda, which is, which is I wanted to form a subcommittee to work on next year's public safety levy. I'll just say I have started to do some preliminary research on, on the things that are needed. We need to get it ready to be on the, to like go to the county, I think by next February, if we wanted to be on the ballot for May. So we need to start thinking about it, like the amount, what the wording is, all that stuff. And it needs to be a, a subcommittee of council, I thought, could start doing it and then could bring it to council and then we could discuss it.
Can be a special election?
It's going to be the May election. It's not special. No, it's a regular election.
So it's not.
No, it will, I think it will, I think it will cost us, but there isn't a regular election until November.
So here's the difference is a special election, you have to have more than fifty percent of the vote. And to, you could have forty-nine people, forty-nine percent could say, yes, we want the levy. But if you don't have fifty percent of the vote, then it fails period. And you've spent all that money for it. Might look into that. It may, you may be surprised at, at the differences between a special election. What has happened in the past is governments would try to sneak something in because nobody's. because nobody's, I'm not voting for the president, you know what I mean? And, and create a situation where the legislature had to do something and what they did was is they tasked special elections in, in which tax, taxes, revenue was being generated with that 50% threshold. So that's something that's.
That's definitely something we have to look into. So that is a good point, Brett. So anyway, that's, that's a committee. I would like to, I think it's good to have a, a subcommittee of counselors work on this because there are some of those details that need to get hammered out and then rather than, then we can bring it back to council. So that's, I would like to appoint that committee. So if anybody is interested, don't hesitate to tell me. And if nobody's interested, then we'll keep working on it. Will you Gary? Okay, good.
I, I can help with that too. I'm sure Tim would like to do that. He seems, that's his, that's his thing. I worked on the last one and that was when it was, that's when I, we learned about the 50% thing and it was a real risk to do that.
Well, I think we can do, we can pull it together with, yeah, we could do, could do Gary and Tim and we, I think if I, I need to turn over, if we had three of you guys do it, then I would need to turn over all the work that I have done so far to you and I could do that. So we can.
So there's the other piece of, of something like this and that is community support. And sometimes when, you know, if you choose the right team members, you know.
Yeah.
Then they have that niche that, that they are close to and, and that can be strategic as well that might consider just.
There's a couple of different stages of this. So like, so you were involved in two of them ago, I think. I was involved in the last one and we ended up, I mean, I was involved with like the getting the word out, buying the signs, you know, we formed a little pack, that sort of thing. But this first stage is just, I think, like the wording and making that strategic decision.
So we, so this is going to be an additional, I guess I don't understand what this, this one is. Didn't we just pass the regular?
We passed the public safety levy. Where we added a public safety levy, or not a levy, we added a public safety fee to our water bill until we could put it to the voters. And so.
That was until the, wasn't that until the next one failed? Or enough, until the next one came up?
No, it was, we decided to do it until we could put it to the voters is what we decided. Because the other one is going to go on for like three or four more years or something. So that's, it was, it, I think the discussion was people felt it was important to be able to put it to the voters sooner than that because otherwise we're charging everybody because we kind of had to fill in that thing. So that's.
So it would basically have to do dual purpose. It would repeal, it would repeal the current one and replace it.
That's the thing. When people say two of them, you know, that takes a lot of outreach to get them to understand that, that what's actually going on. And the one that I worked on failed because people thought it was, it didn't fail. I worked on getting a new one after the original failed and that failed because people thought it was another, another levy, you know, like another.
That's why it's repeal and replace or, but, and that's what's the challenge is, is you only have a very few words to say it.
Yes, and then, and, and the government and, and the secretary of state has a sentence that you have to kind of counter in your message. That's the, that's the tricky thing is, is the thing that says that this could raise your taxes 3% or more or whatever it is. I forget exactly what it says, but you're telling your, them that you can repeal and replace and it'll be cheaper. And then the secretary of state at the bottom says this could cause your taxes to increase by 3%. So there's a lot to it. It really is.
Yep. That's why we have to start it. That's why we have to start it now.
So we have to raise?
Well, I think we have, that's part of the decision. We initially said we had to raise 100,000 to get us out of this year. But if we're looking for sustainable budget for the police, we might have to go for a little bit more. But I think, I think it's going to be an iterative thing and that's the thing I did the research on is to figure out, you know, how much, if we raise it by, how much money can we raise? How much does it take to get 100,000? How much of a raise is it? And like, how much is it for every 10 cents? So I've done that kind of preliminary work, but I think that's the thing that the committee could look at and maybe look at two alternatives. How much would it cost to actually fund the, the, the police department? How much would it fund? How much would it cost to fund? You know, some percent of the police department with some percent of the general fund? And then look at what we're, what people are paying, what, how much can we ask people to pay, you know? So those are some.
Because right now it's dual paid, because the general fund is still putting forward $145,000 out of the, from the general fund to that. And then this $12 police, public safety fee is an extra $12 per hookup, which makes 100, 100, another 100,000 dollars.
Already, right? There's the regular.
There's the dollar 80.
And then the other one is.
The public safety fee.
No, no, there's another, isn't there another two?
Dollar 80, the general fund and then our new.
There's like, if we didn't have the dollar 80.
We just have our property taxes and our public safety fee that we just passed. And the thing about my, my take on the public safety fee is that that is like everybody's water bill. So that goes to like potentially renters or whatever. The other goes to property owners. And so it's spread out under, over more people. So I think for the most part, it's going to be less expensive for most people unless you're like, have a very high property.
Well, you have, what's, it's, it's interesting in that probably stand a higher chance of success giving it to billing the property owner because he's not a voter.
Yeah.
And that's kind of underhanded in a way, but that's the truth of the matter is, is that the renter might vote no, you know, I don't want, you know, the guy, I don't want to pay, you know, I told you I'm a water bill, but the owner doesn't get to say yes or no.
Yeah. Well, and presumably the, the property owner may be in a better position to pay.
May, may.
The second homeowners.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Maybe, and but they don't get to vote on.
Right.
That's the thing. They don't, you know, it's, it's almost like taxation without representation. If you really wanted to think about it, you know?
Except they're doing it willingly. I, I think it's more like, you know, like there's the thought of like.
Sell, right?
There's this concept of whatever progressive taxation where like the, you know, the people who have less money, you want them to pay less and the people who have more money, you want to pay more or whatever. And that that property tax generally reflects that better than like
A sales tax.
Or a fee that goes across the board. So that's, I think that would be appropriate for our community to try to make sure that we're not charging people who can afford at least more.
Oftentimes those are the people that are calling. I mean, that's where the cops end up at. That's, I'm just saying it's true. It's, it's the truth. They end up there and that's who they serve more for, you know, but whatever, I'm not trying to be sticking the butter, I'm just saying there's.
Well, it's just, I'm just saying, going back to what you were saying, that it's not, I, I guess I don't see it as taxation without representation. I see it more as like trying to spread the cost over more people. And that's generally how it's done is through property taxes. When we, when we did the, the public safety fee, it's more communities are doing that, but I thought it was, it was the general consensus of council that people wanted it to go to a vote.
Well, that may be the way it works out, but, but I think maybe, see, so when I look at the spreading it out more.
Yeah.
I look at it in a different way. I look at it like, so the property taxes are already paid in the 180, the owner is. But the renter is not paying the, that, but then he pays the $12. So you're actually spreading it out more by having it the way that it is now.
The renter is paying it through the rent.
Well, that's, that's, that, but then you can't, that's, that's a circular argument there that if you, which way, you know, who's actually paying it? Because we're saying that, that the owner can afford it more. But if the renter is actually paying it, then, you know, you can't argue that both ways. You can only, one way or another. You understand what I'm saying?
Yep.
Anyway, I'm, I'm, I'm.
You digress.
I digress.
The, the point of the thing is, is as a council, we decided we wanted to bring it to a vote. And so if we want to shift gears, then we would have to shift gears, but I think the first step is for a committee, subcommittee to look into it more specifically. Look at the language, come up against these issues that Brett is raising. What's the, what is the strategy? How are we going to do it? What's the amount? And why? And then bring it back to larger council. So that's, that's the task at hand. We could appoint Tim since he's not here.
Call and told. So we call that at our house.
That's the way it works.
Okay. Okay. Well, I, I hear interest from counselor Burns and Webb and possibly counselor Pogwitt. So I will follow up with you three gentlemen and see if we could get that going. So thank you all. So.
I can maybe just highlight too with some of the things that I've learned in the past. I'm not necessarily. I think I might know a few things that maybe hasn't been discovered by others in the group yet. I don't have to be there. I could just maybe attend and.
Yeah, we just have to figure out the whole, you know, the quorum thing and make sure that we do the subcommittee. The, the advantage of the subcommittee is to advance the conversation. So when it comes to council, we can.
It's been thought out a little bit.
We've thought it out a bit and then. Yeah. Okay. So with that, we will move on to agenda item nine, which is citizen considerations. Do we have any citizens online who would like to make a comment under the citizen considerations portion of the meeting for three minutes?
Is there anyone, Joseph?
Okay. Hearing no one interested in making a comment, I turn it over to staff. Any considerations, Melissa or Joseph?
I've said my, I think we've gone over.
Okay. And then considerations for council members? Yes, counselor Rask.
I just want to say thank you, everybody, for your patience with me this last year and a half. It's been really rough and I really wanted to try and stay with it and, and not quit because I really want to do this. But I haven't been able to give it the attention and the care that I wanted to and I will. And I want you all to know that and I appreciate your support so much. I just need a little bit more time to unpack and reorient myself with my home. And then I will volunteer for more things and help out more and I, I just, I really want you to know that and just thank everybody for your support and patience with me.
Thanks, Perry. We're glad to have you back.
Yes.
Anybody else? No. Okay. And I will just reiterate just a thanks to everyone for sticking with this long meeting and putting your attention to all these difficult issues that we must put our attention to. There, there is a rumor still going around that the mayor makes too high of a salary. And so I will just quell that by saying no, that the mayor and the counselors are all volunteers that serve on this council because we really care about the community and the issues we deal with are not the most fun issues. In fact, they're super stressful and can be difficult, but we are, we're doing our best and so I appreciate everybody turning their attention to it. So thanks all. And we have a next regular meeting in a month on October 16th. And if anything comes up in the meantime that we need to meet about, we will be in touch. Like if we have to do something on the filtration or whatever, we'll, we'll let you know. So thanks all. And I will adjourn this meeting at, oh my gosh, too late, nine? Eight forty-eight. Or no.
Good job. Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, thank you. We got through a lot. Thank you guys all for hanging in.
And definitely not too late.
It's the wrong time?
It's eight fifty-five.
Oh, eight fifty-five. I'm sorry. Meeting adjourned at eight fifty-five. Thanks, Joseph. My, my poor eyes.